It is now 6:00 PM, time to call the Planning Commission Order, Tuesday, March 17th, 2015. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. Roll call?
Gary Cunningham.
Here.
Doug Bryson is absent and excused. Steve Griffiths.
Here.
Riley Hogland.
Here.
Bruce Robinson is absent and excused. Deanna Hinton.
Here.
And Nathan Long.
Here. We'd like to announce we have two new Planning Commissioners. On my left here is Deanna Hinton, and on my right is Riley Hogland. Deanna, if you'd like to start first, if you could give us a little information, say a little something about yourself, appreciate it.
All right. First of all, the most difficult thing about me probably is my name. It's spelled like Diana but pronounced like Indiana, the state, Deanna. So, but I'll try and answer to most things, most names. I'm the past president of my neighborhood association, Roads and Improvement Association, and prior to that I was appointed and then elected to the Roads and Water District Board of Directors. And those are my most current and local volunteer efforts. My work history includes years at the Housing Authority of Portland where one of my responsibilities included housing inspections for local, state, and federal code compliance. And I retired after almost two decades of working for the city of Portland as a public involvement professional, and I'm quite interested in the public process and in the involvement of citizens, and it's a pleasure to serve on this commission.
Thank you. It's nice to have you too.
Mr. Chair, if I could just say that Deanna's position is, she is a full four-year term replacing Don Williams, whose term expired at the same time he became mayor.
Great. Thank you. Riley, how about yourself? I think we've met a couple of times on the radio, but-
Yeah, we've met a few times. My name is Riley Hogland. I've previously been on, I was in the VCB for a year, didn't really work out with my schedule and what I had intended. I then was appointed and was on the Budget Committee and have done that for four years. And I ran unsuccessfully for City Council and was encouraged to run for Planning Commission to be, to still be involved, so I'm excited.
I think it's nice to have you too.
Thank you.
He, did he replace-
Jim Davis, who's term is not up yet, you know, but he's no longer on it, but there's two years left on that term.
Great. I know he'll run again for another four-year term after that, though.
Run for something.
Alrighty. Any agenda changes or revisions?
No, not for sure. The city attorney who is, plans to give item 8.1, a review of the Planning Commission rules and procedures, he's, he will be late, and so it's possible that we may need to switch things at the end of the meeting if he doesn't get here, you know, in time for his piece.
All right, great. Well, we can always sing to pass the time if need be. Alright, I'm looking for approval for the minutes of February 17, 2015.
Commend we approve the meeting minutes?
Have approval in a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
I have to abstain, I wasn't on the commission then. Could watch it, though.
Alright. Passed. Alright, next, "Public comments on non-agenda items or matters not involving a public hearing." Please limit comments to three minutes per speaker. Speakers should keep in mind that they are being broadcast on live television. Is there anybody who'd like to speak on any non-agenda items or matters not involving a public hearing? Seeing none. Final orders, resolutions, and written comments. I see none scheduled. Alright, we're to the public hearings. It is now 6:05. The public hearing for file APP 2015-01 is now open. This is a quasi-judicial land use hearing for an appeal of an administrative decision. The subject of the hearing is an appeal of a decision by the Planning Director regarding required side yard setbacks for a new single-family residence in the R1A zone. The subject property is located at 6345 Northwest Logan Road in the Roads End neighborhood. The property owner and appellant is George Sunnega. I hope I pronounced that correctly. Because quasi-judicial proceedings require the observance of certain procedural safeguards, the commission must take a few minutes to cover some preliminary matters and required statements. Do any member of the commission wish to declare an ex parte contact conflict of interest or bias in this matter?
Mr. Chair, if I can just interject for the benefit of our new commissioners, one for, ex parte contact, if anybody has talked to you about this matter, and if they have, you should state the substance of what was discussed. If not, then there's no problem. If you've viewed the site, you should mention that, and if there's anything in particular that's stuck out in your mind, you should mention that so that people have an opportunity to rebut that or support it or whatever.
Mr. Chair?
Yes?
I would just like to disclose that a neighbor offered the staff report to me prior to its being released to us on the commission, and that was through email as an attachment, and I didn't open it. And also, I attended two meetings this week, neighborhood meetings, where this was an agenda item. I removed myself from the room, shut the door between myself and the discussion, and further removed myself so I couldn't hear anything. And so I have no, I don't know what was said then. I didn't learn anything from either of those, and I drive by the house when I leave the neighborhood.
So you did not have any ex parte, or ex parte communications? I don't see, does anybody, any of the other commissioners have an issue? Seeing none? I think we're good.
Yep, just keep going.
Does any member of the audience wish to challenge the qualifications of a commissioner to participate in this matter? Seeing none. Does any member of the audience wish to challenge the jurisdiction of the commission to consider this matter? Seeing none. The following statements are required to be made at the commitments of the hearing pursuant to the City Code and ORS 197.763 paragraph 5. Staff will now read a list of the applicable substantive criteria for the discussion.
Lincoln County Code, Section 1.1310, Single Family Residential, R1 Zone. Lincoln County Code, Section 1.1115, Parents 42, Ground Level Grade Definition. Lincoln County Code, Section 1.1315, Single Family Residential, R1A Zone. Lincoln County Code, Section 1.1267, Appeals of Decisions of the Planning Commission. At this point, the reason why I'm doing Lincoln County Code is because this is in Roads End, and Roads End is still, we still, in Roads End, we still apply the county zoning standards rather than the city zoning standards.
Alrighty, thank you. All testimony, arguments, and evidence must be directed towards the applicable substantive criteria previously listed or such other criteria in the plan or land use regulations which the person believes applies to the decision. Failure to raise an issue accompanied by statements or evidence sufficient to afford the decision-maker and the parties an opportunity to respond to the issue precludes appeal to LUBA, the Land Use Board of Appeals of this issue. Failure of the applicant to raise constitutional or other issues related to proposed conditions of approval with sufficient specificity to allow the decision-maker to respond to the issue precludes any action for damages in Circuit Courts. Prior to the end of this hearing, any person who participated may request a continuance to provide additional testimony, argument, or evidence, or request that the record be left open to submit additional written testimony, argument, or evidence. Before the staff presents a report, I would like to summarize the public hearing procedures which have been adopted by the Planning Commission and City Council. A brochure outlining procedures is at the entrance of the council chambers. Generally, the order of proceedings will be as follows. Preliminary matters and required statements, staff report, questions of staff, appellate's presentation, those in support of the appeal, those opposed, rebuttal by appellant, request of continuance or to leave the record open, close of the hearing, close of the record, request to submit written argument deliberations to the decision. The city has established some time limits. The appellant will have 15 minutes and may re, excuse me, I've been having a sore throat for the last week. And may reserve up to five minutes of the time for rebuttal. After the appellant testifies, any person may speak for up to three minutes. If the Planning Commission has questions, your time responding to any question will not be counted in your time limit. If you wish to speak, please write your name and mailing address clearly on the sign-up list at the entrance. Please speak directly into the microphone and begin by stating your name. If you also have written testimony to submit into the record, please provide a copy to the recorder. Staff, please present report.
Thank you. Mr. Chair, Commissioners, this is an appeal of a decision that I made back in January. In fact, at your seat tonight actually is a copy of the actual decision document. I neglected to attach that to the staff report you have. It's just a very short, one-page matter. This involves a house on Logan Road in Roads End. This picture was taken in December, but the house is in the same condition at this point as shown here. In, we got a couple of complaints from people in the neighborhood that they thought the house exceeded the height limits, and so we did some investigation. What this slide shows, on the left side is an excerpt from the plans that were submitted. It's looking due west, right at the front face of the building. This is, again, this is just part of it, but I want to show you what we, why we became concerned. This is the garage, and this is up on the second floor. This sort of L-shaped area is the roof, which you can see in the photo here. It looked to us at first glance that the, the building had not been built in accordance with the plans. Looking at in particular the area above the garage door, you can see this dimension compared to what's shown here on the plans. This roof, this L-shaped area goes right up to the fascia on the, at the top of the building. You can see here that it's some distance below the, this round window is very close to the fascia here, there's some distance, so that gave us some concern. Just for purpose of comparison, this is a house built a little bit further up Logan Road, is very similar in design. You can see that there's, the distance above the garage door and above the porthole window is more like what was shown in the plans than what was actually built. So I went out and measured it and came up with it being, after doing all the measurements and calculations, came determined that the house was 24 feet 3 inches high. The plans called for it to be 20 feet high, so it had grown a little bit over four feet from what was approved in the plans. And that's important because unlike in the city where we say the setback is five feet for, or as I should say, in the city, everywhere else in the city, the, where the setback is five feet for a one-story building and seven and a half feet for greater than one story. Side yard setbacks under the county rules, the setback is five feet, a minimum of five feet, plus, the way the ordinance reads, is plus one foot for every three feet of building So what apparently transpired, and the record's a little bit unclear, but there was some changes made in the course of construction to the building that were never submitted to the Planning Department for approval. The building official, building inspector, may have said things were okay, but the Planning Department never got a chance to review any of these changes. What's on the screen here is a notice that's attached to the plans when they're approved and sent to the, or given to the builders, saying that even if the building official or the building inspector says it's okay, you still got to get Planning Department approval, and the risk you run is that any changes that have to be made are going to be at your own expense and can involve demolition of some or all of the building if there's violations. So, you know, this was, this is very prominent, stapled to the front of the plans. You can see it's in, in this particular case, it's an orange sheet. We used very bright colors of paper for this. It's large type. The person picking up the plans has to sign for it, so there's one on the copy that we keep and one on the copy that the builder gets. So the, again, the county code, the side yard setback is each side yard shall be a minimum of either five feet or one foot for every three feet of building height, whichever requirement is greater. The, we have conflicting interpretations of what that means. The city has said that what this means is that the side yards have to be one-third of the building height, a minimum of five feet. And this is consistent with what the county has always done on, in applying this rule. In fact, we checked with them just to make sure, because we wanted to do something, do it consistently with the county, so there's no difference between what the city does applying this rule and what the county does. So what this means, with an 18-foot height building, you get a six-foot setback, 19 feet, six foot four, 20 feet, 6'8", 21 feet, seven feet, and so on through. So it goes up, it goes up continually as building height increases. What Mr. Sunnega believes, that it goes up in sort of a stair-step fashion, one foot for every three feet of height, so that at 18 feet, you get a six-foot setback, at 17 foot, it's still six feet, because that's not a multiple of three. 20 feet, still six feet, and then when you get to 21 feet, then the seven-foot setback kicks in, and so on, you know, and it doesn't go up again until you get to 24 feet. So that's, that's the difference in really what's being discussed here tonight. According to our calculations, again, I, when I did it, I came up with 24 feet 3 inches and a required setback of eight feet, actually, it's a little bit over eight feet, eight feet one inch. The appellant said, claimed that the building height is 23 feet 10 inches, so that's below 24 feet, so by their interpretation, the setback is seven feet. And the existing setback is seven feet, that's what it was built at and approved at. So the five-inch difference isn't that important in the present context. Ultimately, if that holds up, then that needs to be dealt with, but the greater concern is what happens between 21 feet and 24 feet in terms of how the setback is handled in that, in that area. In response to my saying that the setback is applied rather than a stair-step fashion in a continuous fashion, the appellant made a couple of proposals. One was to build retaining walls two feet from the house walls, and then fill between the retaining walls and the house structure up to about three feet, I think maximum of three feet to raise the ground level where you do the measurements. And as an alternate, when I said I didn't think that was going to fly, would be to go a little further out from the house rather than, rather than two feet. Actually, they said additional four feet, but I don't think four feet is allowed under any circumstance, because you can't fill within two feet of the property line, I'm told. So this drawing shows that the crosshatched area is the existing building, and then the proposal is to put a retaining wall around the outside of it, about, you know, about two feet away from the walls of the house, and then fill between the retaining wall and the house. So in this drawing, you see this sort of stippled area, that's the existing stem wall and footing. Above that is the wooden wall. The ground level is here, and the proposal is to build a retaining wall and fill. There are, between the floor, the bottom of the floor, the first floor, and the ground inside the stem wall, there's our vent openings that are required for, under FEMA, and they would propose having, to extend the vent opening out through the, through the, through the fill in the retaining wall. So by illustration, here are the vent openings that exist. I think they were talking about changing them, I don't know. This line here is pretty much the floor level line, you can see, and so there would be, about two feet out, there would be a retaining wall, and then filling, and with some kind of flashing over this wood to protect it from moisture and so on. So here it is again. So here's, this is the wooden wall, the frame wall, there would be flashing on the outside surface of it. I just, so the ground level is here, and so they would go up about three feet here, and about two feet out again, and then fill in in this area above, above the existing So I rejected the proposals. There's, there was nothing in any original plans calling for anything like this going up the side of the building. At the time that the appellant's representative talked to me about them, the, they said it, yeah, we could consider it as landscaping, and it would improve the appearance of the house by having these, this retaining wall with, you know, they could plant on the top of it, so. But the context was always in the building's too high for the setbacks, or the setbacks aren't wide enough for the building height, depending on how you want to look at it. I should point out that the allowed building height here is 30 feet, the maximum building height is 30 feet. They're at, as far as I can tell, at 24 feet 3 inches, so they're well within their maximum height, but the setbacks aren't, aren't met, in my opinion. So my evaluation of it was that the, this proposed retaining wall served no purpose other than to make the setbacks appear to be compliant. And so I said that was an impermissible manipulation of the grade. Again, this is something that I checked with the county, what they would do in this situation, and they said they would not approve it, and that it was just a manipulation of grade, it served no real purpose. So I can tell you that the site has had a lot of grading on it. And this is during construction, when they were setting the forms for the, for the foundation, the stem walls. You can see that they dug out a tremendous amount, and actually, the stem walls go down quite a ways below the grade. In this picture, you can see where this person's standing here on the right, this, this level at the right here, that's actually the entrance to the garage. So as you can see in this picture, that is at this level. So you can see that they did a lot of digging out, did a lot of filling after that, before, you know, in the course of construction, but nothing was ever anticipated for the, these retaining walls and the additional fill above that. You see it's complicated by these events that have to end up being, being sort of tunneled through the fill behind the retaining walls. And, and so, again, it was my conclusion that there's nothing, no purpose other than to manipulate the grade so that the setbacks would appear to be, would appear to be met. And I think that's, yeah. So they've appealed my decision in that regard. And I think, yeah, so there were two things. One, it was that my interpretation of how you calculate setbacks, whether it was, whether it should be stair-step or continuous, and I said it should be continuous, as the county has applied historically, the appellant is saying it's stair-step, and then also, it's, it was my conclusion that it was a manipulation of the grade, it serves no purpose other than to try to correct a problem with the setbacks. You did get in your packet a comment from a local resident, as well as you got at your seats tonight, a written comment from the Roads and Improvement Association. So with that, that concludes the staff report.
Alrighty, thank you. Any commissioners have any question for staff?
I do.
Deanna?
Oh. You drew the line on the footing wall where the proposed fill would be. Can you draw it on that, where that would be, on that picture?
Um-
And where they, the proposed floor would be now?
The best I can do is approximate it. It would be, there would be no, none, actually, on this side. On the other side, there would be a little bit up the wall, but I can tell you it's somewhere below the window here, and then out along, actually, a little bit lower than what I've drawn, I guess, because it'll be below this bay window, or this bay over here, so probably more like that. And then there wouldn't be anything until you got to the north side. We're looking sort of south-
Right.
-for the southeast corner right now.
Since annexation, the city has been managing the Roads End area for the county R1A zoning, and there are obvious, this might be an example, but there are obvious differences between the county and the city, and how does, how does the Planning Department track, track the interpretations or the, or the differences, so you know what you're, you know, what you're looking at, or what you're measuring, or-
We keep a binder on what the county's zoning ordinance says, and then we've had questions about it. When we ask the county Planning Department what they do, we keep a note of whatever their response is in that, in the binder.
Is that open to the public?
Yes.
So the interpretation of this measurement is in your binder?
It's in the binder. Kate?
The interpretation of, of what? Say that again?
Of the measurement-
Of how the height is measured?
-to the house height.
No, that's not in the binder. That's, that was something we checked with them on in the course of this appeal, just to confirm that, that how we have been applying it is consistent with how they apply it.
Okay.
But just depending on what you decide, it may or may not go in, or whatever, whatever result we get will end up going in.
Okay, so there wasn't, there wasn't any, there was no, like, track record or whatever, or interpretation of this until this, until this particular house?
There was no track record of us applying it. In other words, there was no, there have been no situations where, before this, where when we were applying the rules, it wasn't, there was, there was a problem with this effect, where the problem, where there wasn't compliance. As far as what the county issues they may have had in the past, you know, that's a separate matter. matter.
Okay, thank you.
Richard?
Yes. My understanding is under the city code, you can't manipulate the grade ahead of time to get your height at all. That it's approved improvement grade.
Right, actually, there's something, a couple of things I should point out here. When, in this, under the city's ordinance, we start with what's called approved grade, which is essentially the pre-construction grade. The county's interpretation, and I thank you for bringing it up, is from finished grade. Now, that means that you can do some, you can do some grading, some filling, but as I said, their concern about grade manipulation is basically the, whatever filling you do or grading has to have a real purpose, sort of a permissible purpose. They don't, they don't have a listing if you can't do it for this, this and this, but what it's, they're saying, if you're doing it for, basically just to give the appearance of meeting the setbacks, that's a manipulation that they wouldn't allow.
What I was going to suggest is, because I read the ordinance and it looked to me like you could build a plateau, you know, if you had the gray, the space large enough, you could put, put a plateau in and then build a house off of it and meet the height requirements. Because it didn't look like there was a real, it did say finished grade, finished construction grade and the house setting on that finished construction.
Right.
It was, seemed open to manipulation.
It is, it is in a sense open to manipulation, but, but they're aware that manipulation can, can go on and so you look to see what's, what's the permissible purpose here. And again, in this case, the, there were, the original plan showed nothing like this and then once the issue came up, it was, oh, by the way, then we can, we can fill in here and correct this problem. And it may well be that you'll say that's, that's okay. You know, that's, that's your decision. My, my interpretation, and again, after talking with county staff and getting their opinion, was that it's, it's an impermissible manipulation.
Steve?
Yeah, were the FEMA floodplain requirements addressed in the original plan that the city approved? And if not, why not?
The, the original plans did not address them. We, before we approved the plans though, the, they required floodplain development permit and actually they changed some of the design to reflect the fact that it did have to be elevated, I think two feet above the, the floor had, the first floor had to be elevated two feet above the highest existing grade, which was at 29 feet, so it has to go up to 31. And they got an elevation certificate that in fact that was complied with. You saw in the earlier picture, there was a lot of excavation and that was to get down to a level where the soils were suitable to support the building. And they had to, and they had gotten a geotech on it as well as the floodplain development permit. It required a lot of excavation to, to correct problems with the soil on the site, but then they brought the, the height back up to an appropriate level and had the floor at the proper level, that first floor.
Deanna?
I have one more question. I was just, I'm interested in knowing a little bit more about the fill and how that's appropriate according to the county. And if I understand it right, the, there'll be a wall that, like a moat around the building two feet from the building and then the fill is on the exterior of that wall. And so my question is, is that correct? And secondly, from, where then do you measure from that fill? Because I read something about averaging, but I, I'm just having a hard time. Do you measure the elevation at the house or, you know, two feet away? Where is, where do you usually measure the elevation?
I will, I'll try to answer them. You asked about the, the wall, that's this heavy black line around the outside that would be the proposed retaining wall. The hatched area is, is where the house is, the walls of the house are. So there would be a two-foot space between the, in the main proposal, two-foot space between the wall of the house and the retaining wall that's, that's proposed and then it would be filled between them. Under the county system, when you measure the height, you look like in terms of the west side, which is here at the top, you measure the, the height at this, at the, at the corner of the building, the two corners. So if the, to the highest point of the, of the building, so we'll say from, from this northwest corner, we'll say it was, just to make it easy, we'll say 26 feet. And then you go look at the southwest corner and we'll say it was 24 feet. And you average those two, so you end up with 25 feet. So the, the height of the building of that side is 25 feet. You do it for all the walls and then average, divide by the number of walls and you come up with the building height. So it's, it's where the, it's where the, the building meets the ground. It's where you measure it from. And when I did the measurements, I did it in a way that I thought would be most advantageous to the appellant. In other words, you could look at it and say there's one, two, three, four walls. You say, you know, like this, this west face is one wall. I did it as one, two, three, four, five walls because that was the highest, the, the ground level was the highest there, so it gave the maximum amount of credit for that. Because it's, the property slopes to the west. Still ended up coming out at 24 feet, three inches. By the way, I calculated it. So, but you, what the county says is it's, it's the average grade of the walls, which you take from the corners and then add them all together and divide by the number of walls.
So one more follow-up question. So then if the fill is two feet away from where you measured, how do we get to there as being the new height or of the elevation?
Because you've filled between the retaining wall and the structure. So now the ground is two, two or three, or two or three feet higher. So that's where you start measuring from rather than where the existing grade is. Is that clear? You don't measure from the ground outside, outside the wall. You measure from the ground right where the, at, right at the corner of the, the house itself.
Any other questions?
I do. What would the fill do to the FEMA flood vents?
Nothing. The, basically the tunnels to the vent through the, from the inside crawl space out to the edge of the retaining wall and that FEMA allows that.
So it would block it or there would be a tunnel through?
There'd be a tunnel through.
Okay.
It's shown here, this is the vent.
I understand.
And then there's this tunnel through here. So you got, the, the outside ground level is out here and so there would be the tunnel to above the ground level.
Is the fill proposing to come up to the house where there is livable space on the backside of the house? Are they going to be coming up essentially from the floor of the inside of the house up?
I don't believe so. If there's what's called a cripple wall, let's see, between the floor level, which I believe again is this sort of horizontal line and the, between that and then down to the, the stem wall of the foundation, that's not livable space in that area. And I don't believe the, there would be fill above that level where, above that first Does that answer your question?
Yeah, thank you.
All right, any other questions? Thank you. All right, can we have the appellant's presentation, please?
While Mr. Frye is passing out some materials, I guess I'll begin our introductions for the record so you know who we are. My name is Jeff Tross. I'm a land use planning consultant. My company is Tross Consulting, Inc. Office address is 1720 Liberty Street Southeast, Salem, Oregon. I'm here tonight on behalf of the appellant, George Sonega, in the matter of this house on Logan Road. And with me to my left is?
My name is Rich Frye. I am Mr. Sonega's son-in-law and reside in Salem, Oregon.
Also with us this evening is Terri Nardone, who's seated in the gallery. She's a manager and supervisor in Mr. Sonega's office and she's had a lot of contact with city staff for the permits involved in this matter. She's available to answer questions or provide more information as is necessary. Mr. Chairman, I share your sore throat and sympathies to you, to me too, so we'll do the best we can. I'm wondering if under your rules, it's permissible for us, for us to ask for a little bit of extra time to make our presentation?
How much extra time?
Well, this is a pretty complex matter. You've had a very detailed staff report from Mr. Townsend, perhaps five minutes extra.
Is the commissioner's good with that?
Great, we really, really appreciate that. I'm going to begin our discussion this evening because there are basically two issues to be considered here. The overall issue, as you've heard from Mr. Townsend, is how to determine the side yard setback that applies in this case. And the two aspects of that is first is how the setback is calculated and second, what is the correct height of the structure on which the setback is determined. So by the way, I should probably reserve a couple of minutes for rebuttal, just in case we need that. We have not seen the comment from the Rhodes End Community Association and we might want to take a look at that and be able to respond to that if necessary. So a couple of minutes out of our timeframe. A couple of other points of note here. First off, we're really only talking about the setback on the north side of this structure. Our understanding is that on the south side, there's already adequate setbacks, so it's only a portion of the lot that's in question. Also, you've seen the slides, of course, that show the structure in its current form and it's important, we just want you to know that that work was done with all required permits and all necessary inspections to date. So the structure, as far as it has been constructed, is, is approved, at least as is. So I'll begin by addressing the way the setback is calculated and then Rich will go into more detail about the height measurements and the history of the permits and everything that was done to lead us to this, this point. As you know, a side yard setback is normally a pretty straightforward matter. It's a development standard of the code. If you want to know what the side yard setback is, you just look in the code, you'll look it up. And for example, the city code requires a five-foot side yard setback for a one-story structure and a seven and a half foot setback for more than one story. It's pretty simple, it's clear. You're one story or more, five feet or seven and a half feet. In this case, the city is using the county code, which is a little different. It still seems clear, at least as we read it, but I think there is some confusion because of the way it's being interpreted or maybe because it's being interpreted at all. Now, this is section 1.13103, small b, large B. And in that section of the county code, it states the side yard setback requires a minimum of either five feet or one foot for each three feet of height. And that's the key phrase that we need to describe tonight. That's one foot for each three feet of height. And this has been interpreted to mean dividing the height of the building by three to figure the setback. And as in some of the examples you've seen on the, on the screen tonight, this can often result in a fractional measurement such as a 22-foot-high building divided by three would require a side yard setback of seven feet, four inches, so on and so forth. The problem we see here is that that's not what the code says and it's not consistent with the plain meaning of the setback standard. The code says one foot for each three feet of height, using three feet as a unit of measurement or an increment that requires an additional one foot of setback. And there's logic to that, which is that the impact of each three feet of height is what requires or warrants the additional foot of setback. Nowhere does the code say to divide the height by three. It says one foot for each three feet. And it's not just me or not just us that, that says that. The code actually provides some important guidance as to how it's to be viewed and, and read. First, there's an illustration that's, that's provided and I can hand you out copies of this. It looks like this, in which it gives examples for a corner lot and a non-corner lot. And this illustration is intended to provide a graphic example of how setbacks are figured. And then down at the bottom of the page, it also says, and remember, this is provided to the public as a guide so that things in the code are more clear. It says, add one foot to a side yard setback for each additional three feet of building height above 15 feet. For example, if the height is 18 feet, then the setback is six feet. So in this illustration, it says add one foot of setback for each additional three feet, again, referring to three feet as a unit of measurement in, in and of itself. So the illustration is important because that's information that's made available to the public for a purpose of determining what the setback is. Now, in addition to that illustration, and I should mention that neither the code itself nor that illustration says anything about a division or a fractional measurement. It does not say for each three feet or fraction thereof, which is the language you would expect to see in the code if the measurement was to be fractional. But it doesn't say that. There's no mention of dividing by three. So if the text wasn't clear, you could refer to this illustration and still not have any clue of a fractional calculation. It's not specified, it's not demonstrated, it's not even implied anywhere in the code language. Secondly, the code has a section which is right up at the very beginning of the zone called, called Rules of Construction. And this is section 1.1110, part F. That says, and it says this, it says, "Any words, terms or phrases that are not defined shall be construed according to common, ordinary and accepted meaning." And that's the code itself setting out the way it's supposed to be read and used. Common, ordinary and accepted meaning. So according to common and accepted grammatical meaning at least, in that phrase, each, in the phrase, one foot of setback for each three feet of height, and I really don't like to get into grammatical construction here, but it's important in, in this case, but each is an adjective that applies to three feet as a single unit. So it's one foot for each three feet, not any part thereof. Again, if the code wanted it to say that, it could, but it would have to say that. I mean, there might not be anything wrong with that, but that's not what the code says. So finally, as a general practice, criteria and standards in the zone code are to be clear and objective. And if the setback standard is interpreted to include a fractional measurement without saying it, then it's not clear to the public and it's not objective because it's not stated. Basically, it's, it's a secret. It's something that only the administrators would know and that means it's subjective. So if we take the interpretation to be the correct meaning of this one foot per three feet, it's no longer a clear and objective standard. The only reasonable interpretation really is not an interpretation at all, but it's to follow what the language clearly says and not impose a meaning that isn't there. Now, this is an awkward situation for everybody because it involves the city adapting Now, this is an awkward situation for everybody, because it involves the city adapting to the county code just for the Roads End area. And so it's not a situation that's used citywide, day by day, or day in and day out in ordinary practice. We understand the city's desire to remain consistent with the way things were done by the county in the past. That was the agreement that was made when Roads End was annexed in. But in this case, to do so is continuing a mistaken reading of the code, and that's not right. The city shouldn't be perpetuating a misreading or an error of the code, even if the county had done that for some period of time. The code doesn't say it. Again, if you want fractional measurements, that's okay. That's not our judgment to make. But the proper way to do it would be to amend the code, so that it's clear to the public that a fractional measurement is part of the way things are done. And I'll conclude with that, turn it over to Mr. Fry, who will talk more about the process of this building permit. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. So I don't know if you've got a copy of this or not, but I handed it out. This is a kind of a timeline on the building of the house. And we submitted our plans on 7/14. And on 2/20/14, the Public Works Department had us revise the amount of fill that we were going to bring into the property to 342 yards. So they were well aware that we had plans to fill the property. The extra excavation on the lot was indeed to get down to a good solid footing, so that we could build a house that was going to stand there, not be on the mush that's closer to the surface. At the same time, on 5/23/14, we received an email from Deborah, and I hope I say the last name right, Martson, talking about our finished floor level and requiring that our finished floor level be 31 feet, and that's 31 feet above sea level. So they're giving us an exact height that we have to hit. And so we did that. And actually, at an earlier date, on the 23rd, they talked about, "Do you know if the fill is under the house footprint only, or if it extends beyond? In zones with a BFE, recommendation is to fill 10 to 15 feet beyond the walls of the building and properly slope." So this is an email from Deborah on the 23rd, telling us that she understands that we're going to fill, and she thinks that it should be outside the foundation. Again, on June 20th, the same day that we were issued our permits, she again tells us about the height that we need to be for the finished floor, and that we need to submit a certificate of our grade, which we did. We received our permit. Then on August 11th of 2014, the planning department required that we submit to them plans for the tall walls that we were going to do to raise the house two feet higher than our original plan. When I say raise the house two feet, I mean that we actually raised the foundation of the house two feet. We did not change the inside structure of the home. The reason that there's a little bit of difference in the facade on the front is that the garage had to stay at ground level, and the floor inside had to come up, which is what we were required to do by FEMA, the county, and the city. So we did exactly what they asked us for. We turned in this plan on August 11th, and on August 12th, we were approved and poured our foundation. This was quite some time after we had gotten our approved plans, that we were allowed to pour. So we made every attempt that we could to abide by what the city was asking us to do. We have stacks of engineering here, probably 10 to 12, geotechnical, survey, everything else that they asked for, floodplain permits, everything else that they asked us for, we gave them. So the next thing that you'll see there is a hard copy, which is on the job site and signed off by the building inspector, at every step of the way, all the way up to the roof of the house. Then we get a letter that states that our house is 27 feet tall, and that we need a nine-foot setback. And that came from Mr. Townsend. So we had a conversation, went out, measured the property, everything else. We then received another letter that said, "Oh, wait, now it's 24 feet, three inches." And that we had said that the house was going to be 20 feet in height, and nowhere on our plans will you find a 20-foot measurement for our house. We never, ever said that. It says 21 feet on the site plan, and if you look at the calculations inside, it clearly states that we will be over that height. And then we raised it two feet because of the FEMA standards. There is also the warning notice that Mr. Townsend referred to, and it says, "You must follow these plans as they are submitted," and that if you only get an approval from the building department and not the planning department, that you're in error. However, we have all the documentation from the planning department that we did everything that they wanted us to do. So we don't understand what the warning that he keeps referring to has anything to do with. There's also a notice that we received on November 17th, telling us that inspections would no longer be made, and we have no documentation other than an email that tells us that. There's also a house, when it gets to the fill, there's a house, right in Roads End, there's two of them, that have the exact same situation where they've raised the property. This is a three-story house on the back. They've raised the property six feet in the back with retaining walls, and done exactly what they're telling us that we can't do. And I gave you some pictures along with that. Here is our plan. I have the original plan here, it's kind of in tatters, so I have a copy of the original plan that we got, if I can. Everything that's circled and read on this plan is on by the city, telling us that we have to abide by the FEMA requirements. Everything that's in yellow talks about the fill that we were going to bring in. We are allowed to bring in, right here on the plan, approximately 342 cubic yards imported fill, on our plan before it was approved. Talks about the slopes, that we're going to be two feet above the native grade. We're raising the two feet above the native grade. Is right on our plan. All the dirt that we excavated was required to be compacted under the house again. So none of that fill went on the outside. So everything that we took out was compacted back under the house again. The other difference is that we changed the fascia on the house to a smaller fascia, and that's another reason that it looks a little different. So I'd be happy to answer any questions that you guys have.
Thank you for your presentation. Not sure if I'm more clear or more confused. But one thing I am confused about, though, is the FEMA requirements, and when, I guess it's in timing. When did you put them in your plan? I guess, because I'm not sure of where that came.
Okay, so...
Timing-wise.
We were first notified about it on May 23rd of 2014. We submitted for our plans on 1/7/14.
Okay, you were notified by whom?
By Deborah Martson.
Deborah Martson?
Yes.
Okay.
And she actually sent a letter to our engineer, and talked to him about the fact that the fill was going to be underneath the house, and that the requirements of the zone for the flooding, and that we had to raise the house and do that. And then she again mentions it on June 20th, which is the exact day that they submitted, or that they gave us our plans. So on the day that they provided us with their plans, she says, "I got a response from FEMA that confirms that your first floor needs to be two feet above the highest native grade," and then gives us the exact specifications for that, 31 feet. And that is exactly what we did, and we have an elevation certificate to prove it.
So is it normal practice to get from the city that you are in a FEMA flood zone? I mean, it sounds like your drawings were already complete, and then the FEMA vents were required in your elevation, right?
I'll have to ask my sister-in-law about that.
Okay.
You need to get this on the recording?
Yes, since the meeting's recorded, so if you could come up and state that, please.
Yes, our plans were submitted on January 7th, 2014, and we were notified by the city of Lincoln City that we were involved in flood zone situation. And so at that time, we began to deal with the city on what was required by FEMA.
I guess as a practical matter, I'm having, it's a little bit of a stumble for me, because if you're building next to the ocean, I don't know, it just seems like you would find that out before you got as far as you did.
Yes.
It's just, I'm baffled, I guess.
Well, we knew that we were in the flood zone, and we talked about the different zones that there are, and actually, the house was moved forward with the help of the city to take it out of one zone and make sure that it was only in the, in one zone instead of being in two zones for the flood zone. So they helped us, they walked us right through the whole process to get to this point.
What's referred to as the flood zone actually is composed of a number of different designations, and I think city staff could probably explain that better. I know they could explain it better than I can, but the different designations have different requirements for where your building is located, and so it's not always enough just to say flood zone. You have to know which particular designation you're dealing with, and that's where all the technicalities of the FEMA map and everything come into play.
And that's why you go to the city for that information, rather than, no, I mean...
Where did you get your information from? You were notified by the city, is that right?
That's correct. We submitted our plans, and the city said, "All right, in Lincoln City, if you're in these plans, and if you..." Actually, it says right here, "The A01 zone requires the first floor to be one foot above adjacent grade, and Lincoln City requires a foot above that." So we would not have known that had the city not told us.
No, I think that's fine, that they did. My question was just in timing and your process and...
It was very early in our process that they told us. We had drawn the plans, we took them in for review. During the review process, which is what is supposed to happen, they said, "Oh, you need to make sure that your finished floor is at this height." Nowhere in our plans does it show our stem walls' heights or anything else. It just says, "This is how we're going to build the stem walls." So they said, "Okay, you can build them like you have it on your plan, only you have to raise them up two feet." So that's what we did. We didn't change the house from there up at all. And when Mr. Townsend talks about the 20 feet to the 24 feet, the 20 feet is to the finished floor of the house, the 24 feet is to the finished grade outside. So there are two entirely different measurements.
If I may, I think, as I understand your question, part of your question is whether this is part of the normal dialogue and back and forth between a builder and the city review process. And it is, because this is quite typical, where plans are submitted, and in the course of the city reviewing those plans, things come up that have to be addressed. And so a builder does not always know everything that a city's going to require, and that's why we have this...
I understand that.
That's also the reason that we do all the engineering and everything else that they require, is to meet their requirements. We don't go out and get the engineering ahead of time and turn it in with our plans. We do what they ask us to do. And the fact about the retaining walls, the former land use consultant that Mr. Sonega had hired came up with the idea of the two-foot retaining walls. We have on our plan, and we have approved, to bring fill into the lot. It says not to put it within two feet of the property line. So our idea was, well, if you're going to raise it up as much as we said we were going to on our plans, we should retain it in some way if we can't get within two feet of the property line with our slope. Then we find other buildings in the same area where the people have built the retaining wall six feet tall, right on the property line, and filled it and put concrete in. And this was done under the county. So why is this okay? And it's a three-story house. This is okay, but ours isn't okay, because we're a foot off on one side, which is what was approved, inspected, okayed, everything else. We get the roof on and everything else, and then all of a sudden, well, now we've got a problem, you need to tear the house down, after we got all the approvals that we could possibly get.
I have one more question. At what point, or did you consider that there may be more than one interpretation for the measurement that's...
Of the code?
That you're here, yeah.
We never considered that there was another interpretation until I came and met with Mr. Townsend and asked... We didn't understand, because it seemed very clear to us that one foot for every three feet, if we were under 24 feet, we were in compliance. And as Jeff stated, we have eight feet on the south side, we have seven feet on the north side. Had we known there was an issue, we could have pushed the house over six inches and everything would have been fine, but we never knew there was an issue until we got the roof on the place, and now we can't push it over.
See, and that's exactly the crux of the issue. The code doesn't give any indication of an interpretation of a fractional measurement. It simply says what it says, "One foot of setback for each three feet." It doesn't say that there's the ability to make that other type of interpretation, so it's not clear to anybody. And certainly, with the informative handout, the illustration, even that doesn't provide that information. So it's not possible for anybody to know that simply by reading the code. You wouldn't know.
Not only that, but the city knew exactly where our finished floor was. They knew what our height would be above that, and it was never a question. They approved the plan with a seven-foot setback, which we have on north side. We have an even greater number on the south side. And they approved the plan as it was, with everybody's documentation saying, "Do exactly what we tell you to do." And now that it's all built, now it's an issue. So that's our only complaint, is that, you know, if you say, "Oh, in the beginning, we'll move it over and everything will be fine," but you can't wait till the end and then decide, "Oh, now it's too tall." And tell us that we can't bring in any dirt to make it within their standards, when they've approved bringing in dirt. It just seems like, we don't know what to do.
Thank you.
Yes, Steve. You've built other homes in the Roads End neighborhood before?
Mr. Sonega has built other...
Has the issue of the setback and the height, Lincoln County Code come up before?
There's never been an issue.
But the precedent for the county has been to interpret it the way Mr. Townsend interpreted the code.
Yeah, they're different-sized lots, you know, different houses. All I can say is that this issue has never come up. Had it come up before, you can believe me that we would have made sure that everything was good, but it didn't come up until we were done building the house. The roof was on, there's $20,000 worth of roofing on it, and then it's an issue.
Then I have another question. Mr. Townsend showed us some photos of the house that you're constructing on Logan Road, and then showed us some photos of your design, and it seemed to be inconsistent, that you did make other changes besides the one that you talked about earlier.
No, actually, the changes that were made that make the facade look different is that when you raise the level of the house two feet, the garage doesn't move up with it. And everything that you were looking at on this picture, can I go over here?
You can use the mouse to put an arrow, no, to your left, or your right, I mean, I'm
I'm sorry, can you speak in the microphone?
Sorry. This level is right where we said it was going to be in our original plan, but the house behind it... But the house behind it has raised two feet in the foundation. So if, if this is still at the same level as on our plan, but the rest of the house has moved up, that causes two more feet here between the door and where the roof is. Because this roof is attached on to the other part of it. This part up here is that in the original plan, there was a, a large styrofoam type of thing that would go on there that would, that would make it bigger, and it was made smaller, which is not part of the structural code at all. And we can, we can change that anytime we like. That is the differences that you're seeing in the house. The house, from the very peak up here on the roof to the finished floor on the inside, has not changed. The only thing that has changed is the foundation down to the ground. That's where the extra two feet came in. And we were told exactly where to put it.
Any other questions?
Yeah, I do. Yes, sir. Yes, the, when the house was approved for the building, that was based upon the 20-foot building height, Mr. Townsend said here on the email in November. And then that would've been for the seven-foot setback. Now that the building is 24 feet, three inches now, the setback would be different. So when, when was the requirement to raise the house two feet told or said compared to when the plans were submitted? And where, where was that discussed, the setbacks would be then?
Okay, so the, the 20 feet is a different measurement than the 24 feet. I just wanna make, I just wanna make sure that that's clear because the 20 feet is from the peak to the finished floor of the house. And then when you come outside the house, the ground is down here. So that's the, the four feet difference that, that you're talking about. And originally, our plan was approved for 21 feet.
21 feet of finished floor to the roof?
Was on our, was, is on our plan. It's not, it was never 20.
From the finished floor to the roof?
From the, in the front elevation, from the, from the finished grade in the front of the house to the top of the roof was 21 feet. It was never 20 feet.
So the bottom of the garage floor to the roof?
Yes. But now, but now, but now the garage floor moved down. But the house, the house moved up, the garage stayed the same. So it would make a two-foot difference. But we have the right- Bring in the fill, which is where it's measured from. On our plan, we're raising it two feet above the pre-existing grade.
And that was the one that was approved in January?
Submitted in January, it was approved in, in June.
And the, and the first that you heard that it wasn't, that the building was higher was in, in October?
November. In November, they told us, we're not gonna have any more inspections.
October is the first that I see that, it was measured at 27 feet.
Yes, in October, we were told that, that the house was 27 feet tall. On 10-16.
And that, okay.
So the, the issue never came up until that time. And you can see by the building permit that the building inspector signed everything off. So as far as he was concerned, everything was according to the plan. And as far as we were concerned, we had submitted every document that they asked for, all the engineering, the tall walls for the, for the elevated crawl space, which they had us engineer because they were now taller than what we had originally submitted. Everything up to four feet, we don't need engineering. But after four feet, we have to engineer it. Well, now we're over four feet because they made us raise it two feet. I, I don't understand where we didn't give information to the planning department.
Does the, does the house, with the city and county's interpretation of the incremental foot setback to height of the building, with the added two feet, does it still conform to the, the city code?
The ci, the county code, you mean?
Well, now it's city also.
Well, it's, it's under the county code, though.
It's only county.
Only county.
Only is county.
Four or five years.
Yes, it's very confusing for everybody. We, we understand that. We were confused.
The 21 feet, right, is what you-
21 feet.
Plus the two feet, right? Because you had to raise it.
Correct.
So we're at 23.7. That is the height that it's at right now, correct? Is, per Mr. Townsend's-
Per Mr. Townsend's, 24.3. We measured it ourselves and 23.10. But again-
And that won't fit into the, the, the seven-foot setback?
Not the way that, that they interpret it. But at the same time, at the same time, our plan early states that we have the right to raise that grade. Now the 23.10 becomes 21.10.
And does it fit into that?
Question about where the, the, the proposal that we're making at this point is not for the garden walls as they were shown two feet out. We're gonna, we would propose to go, which is what we said to Mr. Townsend in the second place, out to two feet from the edge and do our retaining walls there. And they would be only a foot tall in the- There it is. They would only be a foot tall here on this corner.
On where the, the window is?
Three feet tall in the back. It's not, it's not like, like there's a huge wall in the front of the house. It's a very small wall because the grade slopes down going to the back.
To the front, the, the grade would slope to the street?
The grade slopes from the street to the ocean.
And then the fill would go from that window down?
It's, it's, that window is way higher than where the walls would be. There wouldn't even be a wall in the front of the house. It would only be on the side of the house.
On the north side.
Going towards the back, towards the ocean. And it would go from one foot to like three feet or so in the back. And we're already, we're already in compliance on that side of the house.
On the, on the south side?
On the south side, it's only the north side.
Because it's too close to the property line?
Which, when we, when we originally put the plan in at 21 feet, it was okay and-
Right, now it's-
Now it's not.
Any more questions? Thank you.
Attention.
And now it's time for testimony in support of the appeal. And I have Terry Norden. Alrighty, thank you. Is there a testimony in opposition of the appeal? Seeing none. Is there others, including any testimony from representatives of public agencies? Seeing none. Rebuttal by the appellant, obviously, there's nothing to- Yes, sir?
Apparently, there was a plan held up. Was that entered in, a copy entered into the record during the applicant's presentation or the appeal?
Documents?
Yes.
No, it was, it's a big, the big folded plan.
Yes, I'd like that to part of it.
If you could give it to the, to Kate over there.
Thank you. ORS Section 197.763, Paragraph 6A states that upon request, the commission must either grant a continuance for no less than seven days or hold the record open for no less than seven days to permit any participant the opportunity to provide additional testimony, argument, or evidence. Does any person who participates desire to request a continuance to provide additional testimony, argument, or evidence or request that the record be left open to submit additional written testimony, argument, or evidence? I already seeing none. Does the appellant waive the opportunity to submit final written argument after the close of the record as provided in ORS Section-
Mr. Chair?
Yes, sir.
Actually, I would, I would like to request that the record be kept open for a week.
Everybody alright with that? I would, if I make comment, I would too. I've got delusional with a lot more paperwork, plans, more evidence I would like to study. This is a very serious issue. I mean, it's concerning somebody's house being completely tore down or altered or whatnot. So yes, I, I believe at least a week.
My question is a week versus two weeks when we'd meet again? Why the week?
Well, under the statute, the initial public hearing would have, which this is, would have a minimum of seven days, the record would be left open. But that's just the record we left open. Then the applicant would, could submit final written argument. And then you bring it back for deliberations. So I don't know, when is, when is our next meeting?
Uh, it's early April, so it's about three, three weeks away, I think.
Okay, so you wouldn't, you would continue deliberations to that date certain. But in the interim, there would be a deadline for the record to close and then a deadline for the applicant, the appellant, in this case, to submit final written argument, not new evidence, just argument. And then deliberations would occur at your next regular meeting.
I would like to also request if we can get either writ, something written from the county stating what their practices have been over the years on height measurements, what their standards are, something in writing.
I'll see if I can get that.
Okay.
Can I ask a question?
The form that was submitted to us, copies of which we received,
it looks to me like it is in fact the county's statement on the fact. It's, it's got a description at the bottom. Is that true?
I, I don't know, I'd have to, I'd have to check with exactly what the county has.
I, I have no reason to doubt it.
That's why I'm asking for written from the county of their practices, their standards.
It's pretty clear, fortunately.
Of course, what's clear than what people do are usually two different things, so. Is everybody alright to, let's see? So-
I, I can frame it for you. Need a motion to leave the record open until, I guess, Tuesday, the 24th?
Close the public hearing first?
Yes, I'm sorry. You haven't, yes, first you need to close the public hearing. Then you need to leave the record open to Tuesday, the 24th. Or we could do Wednesday. We could do Wednesday.
Do it Wednesday?
Wednesday noon. Wednesday 25th at noon. Final written argument by the applicant, appellant, by Wednesday the first at noon. And then continued deliberations to the next regular meeting, which is-
April 7.
April 7.
7, yes. I'd entertain a motion for that?
I so moved.
Second.
There's a first and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? So moved.
Thank you.
Alrighty. Alright, is now 7:25 PM? This public hearing for file via AR 2015-01 is now open. This is a quasi-judicial land use hearing. The subject of this hearing is a request for variance to allow four feet side yard setbacks for construction of a new single-family residence. The subject property is located at 1334 Northeast Keel Avenue in the Ocean Lake neighborhood. The property owners are applicants, applicants are Chris and Pamela Swaja. Because quasi-judicial proceedings require the observance of certain- I can't even speak, excuse me. Alright, thank you. Because quasi-judicial proceedings require the observance of certain procedural safeguards, the commission must take a few moments to cover some preliminary matters and required statements. Does any member of the commission wish to declare an ex parte contact, conflict of interest, or bias in this matter? Seeing none. Does any member of the audience wish to challenge the qualifications of a commissioner to participate in this matter? Seeing none. Does any member of the audience wish to challenge the jurisdiction of the commission to consider this matter? Seeing none. The following statements are required to be made at the commencement of the hearing pursuant to the city code and ORS 197.763, Paragraph 5. Staff will now read a list of the applicable substantive criteria for this decision.
The criteria include zoning ordinance, Section 1720, multifamily residential RM zone, zoning ordinance 1716, single-family residential R1 zone, 176450, non-conforming lots of record, 176810, variances, authorization to grant or deny variances, 176820, circumstances for granting a variance, and 176830, variance procedure.
Thank you. All testimony, arguments, and evidence must be directed towards applicable substantive criteria previously listed or such other criteria in the plan or land use regulations which the person believes applies to the decision. Failure to raise an issue accompanied by statements or evidence sufficient to afford the decision-maker and the parties an opportunity to respond to the issues precludes appeal to Luba and Land Use Board of Appeals on this issue. Failure of the applicant to raise constitutional or other issues related to the proposed conditions of approval with sufficient specificity to allow the decision-maker to respond to the issue precludes any action for damages in circuit courts. Prior to the end of this hearing, any person who participated may request a continuance to provide additional testimony, argument, or evidence or request that the record be left open to submit additional written testimony, argument, or evidence. Before the staff presents a report, I would like to summarize the public hearing procedures which have been adopted by the Planning Commission and City Council. A brochure outlining procedures is at the entrance to the council chambers. Generally, generally, the order of proceedings will be as follows. Preliminary matters and required statements, staff report, questions of staff, applicant's presentation, those in support of the request, those opposed, rebuttal by applicant, requests of continuance or to leave the record open, close of the hearing, close of the record, request a, submit a written argument, deliberations, and decisions. The city has established some time limits. The applicant will have 15 minutes and may reserve up to five minutes of the time for rebuttal. After the applicant testifies, any person may speak for up to three minutes. If the planning commission has questions, your time responding to any question will not be counted near its time limit. If you wish to speak, please write your name and mailing address clearly on the sign-up list at the entrance. Please speak directly into the microphone and begin by stating your name. If you also have written testimony to submit into the record, please provide a copy to the recorder. Staff, please present.
Alright, thank you. Alright, I am showing on the screen the area of the variance request. This is the-
This is the 1334 Northeast Keel. It's this narrow property right here. This shows zoning also, and it shows that it is in the RM zone. For some reason, my Ocean Lake zone didn't show up, but everything that's white is in the Ocean Lake Plan District. We have commercial to the south, and I think those are the pertinent things there. Here is an aerial photograph with the building outlines on them, just for emphasis. Again, you can see from above, you can see how this narrow house sits on a very narrow And this is, you have a letter from the Gomburgs, we'll talk about later, but this is their property. The other letter is from a woman who owns this house over here. This is the house that now exists on the lot. It's a one-bedroom. The county assessor says it's 525 square feet, and it covers only 21% of the 25 feet by 100-foot lot. Under the current code, it requires a five-foot side yard. This house is 18 feet in width, and so the side yards appear to be four feet on the north and three on the south. The proposal is to build this house, and the plans show that it's 32 feet in height, including this crawl space. The plan for the house footprint is, it shows that it's 17 feet wide, and it has four feet and four feet, two inches, or four feet on both sides, I guess, so that, you know, that equals 25, okay? Here's the north elevation, and you can see here that it's got a crawl space under the front part, and then it meets the existing grade in the rear. Main floor, it's efficient use of space. They are not planning a garage. The parking will be out in front, in 20-foot setback from the street. And the main floor is the living room, the kitchen, bathroom, and a covered patio in the back. The upstairs is a bonus room in the front, a bedroom, bath, and master bedroom. We have four questions that you need to, criteria that you need to consider when you're reviewing this variance request. And the first is whether there is a hardship, exceptional or extraordinary circumstances that make this property unusual, that do not apply to other properties in the vicinity. In his cover letter to the application, Mr. Swaja lists three arguments for hardship. First of all, he says, "single level restriction." He says that the crawl space is necessary because of the topography, and because of that, it boosts up the height of the house and makes it, from my reading, makes it, would define it as a two-story, kicking it into that seven-and-a-half-foot setback. In Lincoln City, builders often don't use, they'll grade rather than use a crawl space, so they would actually do a little excavation, flatten out the site, and put the house on a slab at grade. So, that's an alternative. So, you know, I don't really buy that as a hardship. The second, in his cover letter, is that it has excessive grade. It's about 10% here on this lot. 10% is not unusual in Lincoln City, I guess we'd have to say. And again, I think, you know, that the builders here know how to deal with that by using retaining walls or excavating, grading down to flatten out the footprint of the site. Crawl spaces also are used, so, you know, it's not an unusual suggestion that you would do that, but in this case, it might not be the best suggestion. Staff does not consider the topography really to be a hardship. The third suggestion from the applicant is that the lot size is a hardship, and I can see there where this is an unusually small lot. In the R1-5 zone, well, let me explain. In the RM zone, if you're building single-family, it refers to the R1 zone. And in the R1 zone, we have a minimum lot requirement for new lots of 5,000 square feet, and this is half of that. And also, the width is very narrow, so it's about half of what we normally would require. So, but although it's non-conforming, we have a section in our code that says that any platted lot can have a single-family house on it. So, they are entitled to have a house, and this does appear to be somewhat of a hardship, an unusually narrow lot. So, the second criteria is, is it a preservation of a property right to, and here, you know, we need to consider this house compared to, or this proposal compared to the other houses in the vicinity. And I do call out what the lot widths are for those residential properties on the same section of street. There are 30-foot wide, 50-foot wide, and 50-foot wide. This one's 25. As proposed, the two-bedroom house would have a footprint of 918 square feet, and a total square footage for both floors of about 1,500 square feet. The footprints of the, of other buildings on this block are about double what the existing one is, which, as you recall, I said, was 500-something. So, by having a two-story, certainly, well, actually, by having the one-story footprint is 918 here, and the other houses seem to be about 1,000. So, by having a second floor, it's actually adding a little more space. But it's up to the commission, I'm not going to make that call, I guess, to decide whether having a two-bedroom house is a property right substantially the same as enjoyed by other owners of the other properties in the vicinity. And whether a two-story is necessary, okay? So, the third criteria is that the variance should not be detrimental to the purposes of the ordinance, or to any other properties in the zone or in the vicinity in which the property is located, or otherwise conflicted with the objectives of any city planning policy. Well, we have two properties, and maybe I've, oh, and the other one, the last one, I'll just jump ahead a little bit, is, is this the minimum variance necessary? I'm showing you a picture again of the house and the property, and I called out here that we received letters objecting to the variance from the owner of this house, as well as the owner of this warehouse building. And you have those, they're in your packet. I don't know if you got them both ahead of time. I think maybe Gomburgs you just received, so I want to make sure you have an opportunity to read both of those. The one from the Mrs. Danielson basically is objecting because she says, you know, "I bought my house, I have a view, this is a narrow lot, so I didn't anticipate a two-story house that would block my view on this property," essentially. She also had concern about a fire that happened, both on this property, apparently, and one So, anyway, that's basically her objection, is that it would interfere with her ocean Susan and David Gomburg have four points there, and if you haven't had a chance, basically, they like the idea that the existing dwelling is going to be removed, but they think reducing side packs from 7.5 feet to four is going to impact drainage. And also, that they are concerned about the weight of the two-story structure with minimal setback will destabilize the property boundary. They pointed out that this property is somewhat higher in elevation than their property. She's concerned, they're concerned about, again, damage, fire damage, when it's so close together. And also, the limit on light and livability, if they change their property in sometime in the future and want to have windows on that side, I suppose. Okay, so. I did a sort of a cross-section here, a profile, so that you could see the impacts. This is Keel Street on the left hand of my drawing, down here. Here's the street, okay? And the slope, here's the 10% slope. And then here is the property to the east. So, right now, there are some little cottages that sit back where there was a fire, so there's nothing close to the property line anymore on the adjoining property. But I put a 32-foot building on this one to see how that would compare with the existing, compared to, in terms of view, and there is some potential here for ocean view again. And how it would compare to the new house if it was this size. And this is just a block, but it is showing a 32-foot height and the length proposed in the plan. So, you can see that only the windows probably at the very top of this house then would be able to see over that property and have a view.
Alright, that's the house on the south?
This is, okay, this is the property, this is, Keel is to the left here. Keel Street is right here, and this is the driveway in front of the subject property, the one we're talking about. This is the proposed, this block is the proposed house, as it would sit on the property. And then, as we extend to the back lot line, then I'm showing you what the adjoining owner, what kind of effect there would be if the adjoining owner was to build either a multifamily building, or even a single-family that was about the same height. The taller building on this lot would limit the view from the adjoining lot. Now, let me clarify that we don't, we don't take it upon ourselves to protect people's views. So, we don't prohibit someone from constructing a house within these setbacks and the other requirements in the code, just because it would affect someone's view. But, because this house is very narrow in width, and without a variance, would not be able to build a two-story, or most likely would not, then by giving a variance, you are allowing something that wouldn't normally happen. So, and I don't know what they're thinking was, when they purchased adjoining properties, but if they anticipated that nothing would change here, that there would not be a two-story, and then you grant a variance and allow a two-story, then that's where I'm saying it may have a detrimental effect on their, on their views. Okay? So, by comparison, I showed, instead of having a crawl space, which you see, this is, this, the back end of the house meets the existing grade, and then they use a crawl space so that you have a flat floor, you know, to raise up the front, so that you have a level floor here. In the next diagram, I've shown, instead of raising it up with a crawl space in the front, what if you excavate and dig down in the back so that you have a level floor that then meets existing grade in the front of the house? That results in a shorter house. Okay, so. I want to make sure I'm not missing anything here. So, anyway, my question is on criteria three and four, whether or not this is really the minimum variance necessary, and whether any variance at all would be detrimental to the neighbors. If you find that the proposal does not meet one or more of the criteria, you can propose conditions that you believe would allow it to meet criteria. So, for instance, if you can make the house shorter, or something like that, and you think that would have less detrimental effect on the neighboring properties, that is within your authority to say that we would grant a variance, but we suggest these following limitations or special conditions. I am calling out, the first one is that the fire marshal said, you know, he would not, he would not prohibit development of a two-story on the site, but he did suggest non-combustible siding. I think both of the people who wrote letters objecting mentioned fire as a concern. So, that may be one way of giving some assurance that that would not be a problem. Another condition you may have is, you know, maybe you would allow a variance for a one-story, but, and then, you know, you have to decide, could you allow variance for a two-story and still feel that you've met the criteria? Another condition might be the maximum height that you think is acceptable. Let me back up to one-story or two-story. As you've heard already tonight, in most of Lincoln City, we apply a code that says if a house is one-story, it has a side yard setback of five feet. If it's two, more than one story, so a story and a half, or two stories, then all of a sudden, you know, it has a seven-and-a-half-foot setback. So, the applicants don't have the space for either one, actually. If they're planning a 17-foot wide house, then 17 feet plus two five-yard side yard setbacks is 27, they've only got 25 feet. So, they'd need two-foot variance, foot on each side. But if they have a two-story house, then their requirement is seven-and-a-half on each side, a total of 15 plus the 17, and they're eight feet over. So, so, anyway, those are some options of conditions that you might put on if you want to consider allowing a variance, but you have concerns about the detriment to the surrounding properties. Okay, that's, that's all I have for that. Do you have any questions?
Commissioners? Yes, Steve?
I have one. The fourth exceptional circumstance is whatever variance we might approve needs to be, they call the minimum variance.
The minimum possible, the minimum necessary, I guess, is the way it puts it. That means that if they, if you say yes, they should be able to have a single-family house on their, on their lot. And so, we want to give them, and, you know, they can't do it with, and still meet the requirements. Then the question is, how much of a variance do they really need in order to be able to have their single-family house? So, you know, you're not going to say, okay, you don't have to have side yard setbacks, just, you know, you're going to just give them the minimum that they absolutely need in order to be able to have that same, enjoy that same property right.
Okay, thank you. And I had one question. I don't understand something that the Gomburgs mentioned in their letter, and I was wondering if you could explain how the weight of a two-story house might destabilize the property boundary?
No, that's out of my area of expertise, and I'm sure that whatever the building inspector would allow, you know, would, would not, if the building inspector thought that was going to be an issue, the building inspector would not allow that type of construction.
Yes, Deanna?
I'm not quite sure how to form my question, but in your experience in Lincoln City, what is the shortest or minimum height a house could be for two stories? Like with your slab construction and a lower roof and all of that, just what?
Well, what I suggested here is that slab construction would be, would reduce the height, I don't have a number, I guess, you know, to be blunt, but the slab construction rather than a crawl space construction would reduce the overall height by, you know, may, well, he mentioned eight feet if he, if he did it, if he had a longer house, but I think here, we're, we're looking at maybe four feet or so. Also, by reducing the pitch on the roof. Let's see if I can find that. Okay. 912, okay, thank you. You know, that makes the house taller, certainly the peak taller than if you had a 412 roof, you know, something flatter. So, I talked with the building inspector about this, and I said, you know, what's realistic, you know, and, and so that's why I put those, those calculations in, in the, in the report, because he said, yes, you know, that would be reasonable to have a slab rather than a crawl space, reduce it that way, it would require some kind of a, probably a retaining wall so that they, the, the first floor wouldn't be underground in the, in the rear of the house. But that's not unusual to have a, you know, to grade out a patio area or something like that and have a retaining wall around it in the back. And then as far as, as far as the roof pitch, this is a reasonable option to have a lower roof pitch in order to decrease the height of the house. So, I don't have a number, we just, we just generally regulate the maximum height, and, but this house is very low. The existing one is, is pretty low, and I just guessed, I said, certainly it's, it's not more than half the height of the, of the proposed house, because I didn't actually measure the height, but it's, it has a very low profile.
What is the side yard setback of the neighboring house on the, on the right there? Do you know? I mean, it looks, yeah, it looks pretty close.
Oh, let's see, it is, yeah, it is pretty close to the lot line. Lot of times here, you can see it in relationship to the lot line. But it is, it does have a small overhang, and so you're looking down at the overhang we measure from the wall. But it's not a, it's not a really big overhang.
Well, it looks like the little house there could use the gutters and the big one doesn't because it just ran off onto the little house roof, so.
Oh, right.
Looks close.
It's pretty tight, it's pretty tight.
What is the side yard setback now?
I mentioned that earlier, let's see.
I'm sorry.
Well, I'm not, yeah. I just used it from the aerial photo. I can't remember what I said either.
Is it four and two and a half?
Yeah, we figured the house right now is 18, I believe, and so that would be seven feet left over for side yards. So it's really not meeting the, the five-foot even now.
Yes, Steve?
The lot is very narrow, but it goes back quite a bit.
Hundred feet.
Is there enough room to design a two-story, one-bedroom house on the lot?
A two-story, one-bedroom?
Two-story, I mean.
A one-story, two-bedroom?
A one-story, two-bedroom.
Right. Well, that's not for me to say, but it seems like, I mean, they do provide a patio back there, and, and so, you know, that shows that they have some additional space, maybe. So, I guess the applicant maybe could tell you, you know, what they have tried to do and, and options that they have, have considered.
All right. Yes, Commissioner.
Do you have the, the property to the north as a, as a home, or it's a warehouse?
It's a warehouse.
And the property to the south is a house?
Yes.
Do they follow the setbacks themselves, those two properties?
Well, we were just talking about the house to the south being too close.
It is too close.
And to the north, let's see here.
I guess I just didn't get it up.
It looks pretty tight there, too, doesn't it?
Well, I don't know, I mean, if it follows it or not, I mean.
Yes. I can't tell you for sure, but it looks like it's pretty close to the property line.
Okay. Yes, Deanna?
Well, that was practically my question. I was just curious what the setbacks are for the industrial building to the north.
Well, that's still in the RM zone.
Yeah, the zoning says what for the setbacks? Do you know?
What does the zoning say? Do you happen to know?
For, for a warehouse?
For an, yeah, for a.
It's a non-conforming building.
Okay.
It's a use that wouldn't be allowed to be built under RM zoning. Okay, so all three properties are a little.
Non-conforming.
Non-conforming, okay.
What is the maximum height for a single-story home?
We don't have a maximum height for a single-story, but it's just by stories. So if it has more than one living spa, if it has living space above the first floor, then it's more than one story. So a story and a half, for instance, you know, with the sloped roofs, and, you know, would still be a seven and a half foot required setback.
Yes.
Could I ask if, is this a recent purchase, or is this something that they've had in their family, or is that a question I can ask?
You could ask the applicant that.
Okay.
Yeah, I, I believe it is a recent purchase.
Any other questions? All righty, thank you.
Yes.
Would it be helpful to have a picture of?
Can we have the application's presentation, please?
Good evening, council members. Appreciate the opportunity to.
Could I have you state your name, state your name first, please?
My name is Chris Swaja.
And speaking the.
Oh, yeah, thanks. Katie warned me about that. My name is Chris Swaja.
You've all been warned about that, so.
Yes, yes. Chris Swaja. I currently reside in Hillsboro. My wife Pamela was kind enough to come and support me from behind note. This is my first rodeo, along with Mr. Hoagland and Ms. Hinton, so bear with me. I've got a lot to cover here, and it looks like a very short amount of time to do so. I think, I'd like to start with my background, very briefly, 37 years in commercial and residential design. A lot of that just additions, remodels for homes in my home business, and then designing multifamily structures, more structural background. And 35 years ago, I married my wife, and Lincoln City was our honeymoon. So it started way back when, and then we have enjoyed coming to Lincoln City ever since. And now that all the kids are gone, out of here, we've collected a little bit of money, and frankly, we're gambling a lot in a first purchase, this is a first-time building for us. Designed a lot of structures over the years, but this is a real big step for us. Some might ask, what in the heck were you thinking when you bought this property? Well, again, you know, starting small, the budget was very small. We found a property that a real estate agent suggested, and she suggested go up in the backyard, take a look, I think you can see a peak of the ocean. Of course, there it was. And then the, you know, bells and whistles went off, it looks like a great opportunity. Checked with the city, found out what the code requirements for as far as height was concerned, and then we got into the whole issue of setbacks, all that, so I figured, okay, no problem, we should be able to at least get something high enough, hopefully, within, within that criteria to at least get an ocean peak in it. So that was part of the driving force, but again, the budget was the other, and Lincoln City finally was the third. So, we were hoping to get a minimum two-bedroom home. You know, having four children, six grandchildren, you know, we'd hope to at least get a little bit of moving room, breathing room for a first time around, and hopefully at some point we could expand, get closer to the ocean, depending on, you know, how finances work and everything. So, as far as the structure is concerned, and I have to apologize to Deborah, that there was some information on here, I didn't have time to get to you on it, but there's some corrections I need to make in, in regard to the lot and the house on the lot setbacks and different questions. The house actually measured is 15-foot wide currently, and there are five-foot setbacks on both. The steel structure building to the north is probably four foot, three inches. I scrambled down here to get some of the scriptal measurements last minute when I got that letter from the, the neighbor going on there. One of the issues he raised was the, the grade and the possibility of erosion and things like that happening. And I guess if I could jump to that, I wanted to address that as well. And looking at his letter, this is the Gombert letter, the, he indicates that we're a higher elevation than the neighboring lot, and he's correct in some cases and not others. In the very front corner of the building, there's approximately a two-foot drop right at the fence line, i.e. property line, and then from there, it comes right up within about four feet, and it's same grade to within probably, I'm guessing about 30 feet from fence. At 20-foot from the back fence, it's approximately two feet. Now, having a structural background, typical engineering, as far as load path is concerned, is they use a 45-degree rule, okay? So in this case, if you build this house, and if it was a slab, let's say, on, on this property next to this warehouse, and, and, and it's a four-foot setback, from a design standpoint, you would have four feet you could come down in that setback to, you know, so you could have like a four-foot drop and not affect that property at that point. Some engineers use a two-to-one rule, they're very conservative, but as a general rule, and I checked with my engineer this afternoon, the standard rule is 45 degrees. So in this case, you know, and you take into, in addition, if in fact, we're, I'm allowed to build a crawl space, that's 18 inches below the surface of the grade. So again, it makes it even more comfortable. There's no issue as far as that's concerned with the steel building, in my opinion. It's a different story on the other side. The setback for the neighboring side on the south side is one foot, eight inches. And again, this is assuming the fence line is the property line. So we have a total of six foot, eight separation on that side. In addressing the fire issue, I agree with the fire marshal, and my intent is to use Hardy Panel, which is a resistive product, cementitious fiber, which is fire resistant, I guess you could say. I've designed a lot of structures, and four-foot seems to be a standard, whenever you get within that four-foot, that's when they require a fire-resistant material. In Washington, they've even gone so far as if you're within five feet, or closer than five feet, you have to at least do the eaves and overhangs in a fireproof material, so, you know, it kind of helps that, anything within that, which is not the case here. As far as, I'd like to move to the slab versus crawl space. I've looked at the samples that Debbie, is it Debbie or Deborah, I apologize? No, Deborah, okay. In considering the crawl space, what I did, and I took considerable time thinking this out, and how this was going to work in conventional construction. Crawl spaces are by far a more typical construction. At the coast, it may be different, on the beach itself, where you have the sand soils and that, and a lot of movement, where they may use slabs more. I asked my realtor to do a quick search on it, find out listings, and there's 769 listings in this area, 11% were slabs, and the rest of them were crawl spaces. So to give you an idea of what the actual construction methods are, that's very typical, very typical for Oregon in general. The using the slab creates many issues. First of all, adding cost in retaining wall, construction, excavation, and engineering, again, adding quite a bit of cost as opposed to the conventional crawl space stem walls. The other thing is, and it came to light when the, when the business owner next door brought up the issue of, of load path, and, you know, he was afraid of erosion and that. This house being one foot, eight plus five at the time, and of course, I'm asking for four foot, all of a sudden, you start going, okay. The drawing that was shown, excavating into the, into the property, six feet deep, which four feet is requiring, four feet and more is, requires a retaining wall design. So there might be some issues in regard to digging down as far as that neighbor that's one foot, eight away. Back to the letter for Gombert, the other thing he was concerned about erosion and water. The fact is, is potentially, I've got a bigger footprint with the roof, it would collect more water than would be on the surface of the ground, and I would assume that we're the same here as any most, well, in Portland, I'm used to that, that we would have a system where we drain that roof water to the rain drain, and into the drain system, and not just out into wherever it's controlled. So he's actually going to have less water available to cause any erosion, and it won't be running off, the house will be running in gutters and down, downspouts into the drains. Let's see, he also indicated, of course, his building is a steel building, so the fire issue with his side and having, you know, potentially eight foot between buildings, I, I think we're in very good condition as far as that's concerned. I think the biggest issue here, from what I'm hearing, is more the visual problem, should I say, or the visual issues for neighboring properties. And I'm sensitive to that. At the same time, for example, Ms. Danielson, she's, the house up on the hill is a very tall structure that you saw in the picture on the right and in the rear. She's got pretty much an unobstructed view from the main level, let alone the top level. And I think even adding a second story to mine, and yes, the peak of the roof potentially could, you know, eclipse part of that view standing on the back deck. I did some measuring this afternoon also, there are approximately, where the back of the house theoretically would be on my lot, the bottom, the floor level of her deck is approximately 12 feet above that. And then you figure, you know, standing out four or five feet, you've still got, you know, approximately 17, 16 or 17 feet above grade where my lot, where the back of my house would be. So there's a substantial room there for growth, if you will, of that, of that project. And I guess, you know, going back to that, you know, I'd like to at least get an ocean peak myself, you know, so if I can get whatever the criteria is that you use for that visual path, I'd like to know what that is, so that I can redesign if necessary, and take those in consideration. Again, I'm trying to get enough space in this house to where I can actually physically use it for my family, which I feel is very reasonable. I'm asking for two additional feet to the side. And bear in mind also, for this 15-foot width in a single-bedroom house, I've got two-by-six stud construction that's required with the installation requirement. So you're taking a foot off automatically, okay? Then, in order to access the rooms, you're talking about a three-foot minimum hallway. So all of a sudden, I've, I've got to take four feet off of whatever I design on the structure, okay? And, and it's very subjective, I think, the term of what's, what's the, the minimum, you know? Some people would scoff at, you know, a 16-by-16 living room, that'd be a mansion to me. So, to keep it in context, you know, what I'm trying to do is expand enough to where at least I feel it's a reasonable width to work with, to live in. I also, I asked Kate to pass around a rebuttal to some of the points on there, did you get a copy of that? I assume you did.
Yes.
If I could direct you to the picture in there, I took these, actually from Google, I tried to do the best I could to find a, a more appropriate or one more realistic picture to show you elevations.
Which picture are you showing there?
This one right here.
I guess.
Is that in your materials?
No, it's not, it's the supplement that I asked Kate to pass. It's, it should be on the last page or the second to last page. Now, the neighbor. Now, the neighboring house to the south, their crawl space, just to give you an idea in this case, is seven-foot, it's approximately seven-foot to plate line. In other words, if I climbed up seven feet, I'd be walking on the deck, and then probably another, you know, two to four inches typically into the house. So, they're already seven-foot above what my lot is, and down in the front of my cute little cottage, it drops another foot and a half roughly to the driveway area. So, in this case, you know, again, if we're doing a single level, it becomes critical for me, you know, to be able to build something similar to the next-door neighbors, you know, and I'm asking for three-foot or four-foot for a crawl space area, whereas my neighbor's got seven, so I'm still in a disadvantage for height, you know, as far as any of you at all, or just to feel like I'm, you know, maybe about the same size as the houses around Ms. Daniels in the back, you know, just for a note, she's got approximately a four-foot crawl space underneath her house, and then that's where she starts her main level and then builds up. And those are rough numbers they're based on. Gee, their deck rail's about three feet, so that looks about three, four feet, so I'm generalizing just to give a general idea. Ultimately, I'd like to have a house, and I think I could work within that platform if there was a restriction on height, that it would at least be the same height as the neighbor to the south, this house in the forefront to the right side of that picture. And I can work, and I could probably design just about anything in a given format, you I also want to address the stepped footings. The issue I have with that is, you know, to break your house into three parts and have a three-step, and it's 20, 24 inches approximately according to the drawings, that's three steps to each level. There's no consideration here for handicap via wheelchair or walker like my mother has. So, it could be very restrictive in that regard to have steps. Also, my opinion is that the roof line at the highest-most point is where your visual's going to be blocked from the back, so why not allow that crawl space in the front to be three feet and extend that roof forward? So, that was my opinion on the stepped ones, along with more flashing that would be required, and probably a little more cost because of the stepping, you know, as far as the structure itself is concerned, siding, and again, flashing issues. I don't know what that beep was for. Does that give me five more minutes?
Yeah, it was timed up, but you know, I'll give you, go ahead and finish up.
Okay, and just a few more items. The house east is probably the biggest issue, and it's an assumption that the grade is flat there. I believe it does actually rise to some degree, so they'd be looking at the same scenario and adding a crawl space to some degree underneath the house and picking it up to where it at least doesn't run into a more excavation or a retaining wall situation. I'd also like to note on figure four on page six, when we're drawing the box figures, it shows that, you know, there's no view, or it's very much obstructed by the project that we're suggesting. But bear in mind with a pitched roof, especially steeper pitched, you've still got views on either side of it. It's not like a block where I've got, the second story's a flat roof, and we go up as high as we can get it. So, there is some view that's maintained around that gable on that house. Also, with the retaining, or with the slab issue, on the same page, the last detail, the problem that I run into is that in order to get a two-bedroom house, we have to go back considerably farther. You know, I take a very basic, you know, 12-foot wide master, 10-foot wide bedroom, five-foot wide bathroom, allow a little room for washer and dryer, a small kitchen, small living room, adds up real quick. And while we could extend it back, what that does is it keeps rising it up, that grade level in the back. So, what I try to do is shorten it up in the front to try to keep that down somewhat. The problem with the slab as well is when you get back in and you're six feet deep in the back, that's where the bedrooms are, you've got a problem with egress. You've got six, you've got eight-foot wall, or eight-foot ceiling height typically, maybe nine feet, you take away for the header, four-by-eight or four-by-12 typically, so you've got six, you've got eight minus six, you've got two-foot minus a foot header, bam, you've got a one-foot window. It doesn't mean egress. So, if you ever have a fire, we're in trouble in the back room. And there's also insulation issues, which makes the wall wider. It's an eight-foot, eight-inch retaining wall, so I've lost a few more inches of width, plus the furring for electrical and for insulation. So, there's a whole myriad of things you have to consider when you dig down and you do it that way. And I think, you know, again, asking for four-foot setbacks at two-story, again, it's more of, I'd like to just be able to fit this in with the neighbors. My intention isn't to build a three-story house there and maximize the view at everybody else's expense, so. I think I've pretty much covered everything I want to cover here, and I appreciate your time on it and my extended time on it. Thank you very much.
Great, no problem. Any commissioners have questions? Please.
Okay, you were talking about the crawl space in the front.
Yes.
And again, what is the height or depth distance?
My initial design was four feet. I think I modified it and dropped it to three feet, and I thought I could get away with that based on the current two-story that I designed. And what I did to get to that point is I figured out how long the house was going to have to be, and I figured a six-inch, a six-inch height in the back for my concrete, you know, from the grade to where the floor is, and that was my control point, and then I extended a flat floor to the front.
So, is there a crawl space in the back of the house in your design?
Yes, there would be an 18-inch crawl space. In other words, it would step up the hill. The crawl space would step up the hill, yes.
Any other questions?
Yes.
When, about how long ago did you purchase this property?
Actually, it was almost, I'm thinking nine months, 10 months, and yeah, it's been about that long, and long overdue to get this design done and get going on it.
Well, I'm just, so the house that you, where we saw the drawing of what you designed or what you're thinking for this
Correct.
Lot, this very undersized lot.
Correct.
What is the height again, as you've designed it so far?
I think it was slightly under 32 feet. I was thinking 32-foot was the max, but I'm not sure it's 32, 35. I'll have to double-check that, but the idea is I wanted to make sure it was a few feet less, so I didn't get caught like the previous issue.
Okay, I think I better stop.
Any other questions? Yes, Riley.
What's your lot size?
My what?
The lot, the lot?
It's 2,500 square feet, 25 by 100.
And right now, you're saying the side yard setback on the north side, you measured seven?
No, they're both five-foot.
Oh, they're both, no, I mean, as it sits now. Yeah.
The current house?
Yes.
The current house has five-foot setbacks both sides, and it's a 15-foot wide home.
I think he was giving us the measurements from the, the houses on both sides of him are not by foot setbacks. They're non-conforming as they stand now.
Yeah, I was looking at that, what'd you say, one point, something?
Yeah, one foot, eight, and I had discussions with the building inspector, plans checker recently, and he said, "I'm not going to tax you for that. They built within that setback, it's not my problem." It is from the respective owner, make sure there's no fire danger to my structure at least, and potentially theirs, because it works both ways.
Right.
And of course, the other side, I just learned tonight that they have four-foot setbacks for a, for the warehouse, so he's, I think he's four-foot, three or four-foot four, so he's within his.
Okay. Yes, Deanna.
Okay, I've gotten braver. I wasn't quite sure how to ask this question, I'm still not, but given the, the, I'd objection is too harsh of a word, but the comments by two of the neighbors, and do you, can you see a different design after hearing those comments that would, such as the material that you would use on the exterior, which would be up to the fire marshal's suggestion? I mean, that's one example. Can you think of something else that would give us something more to think about for design?
I think I've addressed the fire issue, excuse me. I don't think there's any issues there, but I have addressed the idea that I am going to use the hardy panel, the cementitious fiber. Regardless of the comments on one of the letters, I still feel somewhat a sense of obligation to try to protect their view as well. I'm not a neighbor that likes to take the city code requirement, or city code minimums or maximums and cram them down somebody's throat, I'm sensitive to that. I would consider redesigning the structure, and I think what I would do is actually ask involvement from those neighbors and say, you know, okay, we're going through this process, I'll give you one shot here, to give me some criteria, or at least give me a little leeway. For example, the house on the top, the Danielsons', is a very tall house. It's got an unobstructed, probably 360-degree view of Devil's Lake and the ocean, you know, so how much does she need, and on the first level, you know, how much of that is she trying to protect? I've got a very small footprint, too, keep in mind. You know, it's 15, possibly 17-foot with your approval, but again, the pitch of the roof, which is, you know, up in that zone where they actually visually could see it, goes to zero. So, yes, it could be designed for a shallower roof pitch. The idea that I came into was designing a house similar to the Olivia Beach style, which was my realtor's suggestion, and I love those styles, and that's kind of what we did. We looked at some of the houses there, steep roof pitches are, there's a lot of them in there, and the coast typically has a lot of ceilings or roofs that way, in some of the older homes as well. So, it was an aesthetic thing, too, an architectural picture that I wanted to present. That's your first thing that you see when you drive up, so.
Thank you.
Does that answer your question?
Any other questions? Yes, Riley.
This might be a question for staff. The maximum house to lot size, what is that?
50%, isn't it?
I think that's right in your zone, because you have a smaller-than-normal lot, a non-conforming lot, the code provides more coverage when the lot is small.
So, the house can cover 50% of the lot?
That sounds right.
Yes. So, if we, if he made a single-story house to the same square footage, it wouldn't, it would also violate the statute by covering 59% of the lot, right? Is that correct?
Say that again.
If he built a one-story house?
Oh, and made it 1,500 square feet?
And made it 1,500 square feet.
Yeah.
It would violate that also.
Correct.
That's probably true.
I guess, okay. I guess what do we want, more violation?
You know, even that's a good point, Riley.
Do we want it to be higher and violate the setbacks? Or do you want it to be longer and violate the square footage?
That's where the hardship comes in for this, because it's such a small lot, we're...
And what's property right? Is a 1,500 square foot, are you saying, is that the minimum property right? You know, I mean, that's...
Right. Do you want it taller, do you want it long?
You might want to wait until deliberations.
Right. Okay, thank you.
Any other questions?
No.
For the applicant?
No.
Thank you very much.
Great, thank you all.
All righty. Now, we have testimonial support. Chris Swaja.
That was the applicant.
That was Chris, oh.
That was the applicant, yeah.
Testimony and opposition, seeing none. Others, including any testimony from representatives of public agencies, seeing none. All right. There's no rebuttal by the applicant since there is no opposition, so it's time, let's see, what do I got? ORS Section 1977.763, Paragraph 6A, states that upon request, the commission must either grant a continuance for no less than seven days, or hold the record open for no less than seven days to permit any participant an opportunity to provide additional testimony, argument, or evidence. Does any person who participates desire to request a continuance to provide additional testimony, argument, or evidence, or request that the record be left open to submit additional written testimony, argument, or evidence? Seeing none. Does any applicant, does the applicant waive the opportunity to submit final written argument after the close of the record as provided in ORS Section 197.763, Paragraph 6E? Right's been waived. Prior to or during deliberations, commissioners may consult with the city staff and city attorney. Do not ask staff or legal counsel for new evidence. Does the city attorney or staff have any comments, concerns, legal issues raised during these proceedings, instructions on applicable law, or legal advice concerning the application of the law to the evidence in the record?
I can talk.
If you want.
I guess the first thing I'd point out is that this is a variance request, and the code requires that all the circumstances, the four criterion, are met. Variance law is largely, I'm quoting here, variance law is largely embodied in local legislation, and particulars, of course, vary from locality to locality. There are some recurring themes. One is the concept of hardship. Another is that the variances are an extraordinary remedy that should not be employed as a substitute for the normal legislative process of amending zoning regulations. Meaning, you know, if the code should have smaller setbacks, then we should amend the code, not grant variances. So, we have a couple issues here. The first criterion, staff pointed out, has to deal with the extraordinary and exceptional circumstances, and the issue is the small lot, and it's one of the listed items that could be, and staff seems to think that the small lot is, qualifies as an extraordinary circumstance. Again, I need to clarify, my role is not to make the decision just to give you legal advice.
Right.
So, this is just my advice. The second criterion, staff said that necessary for preservation of property right, and that really wasn't discussed too much, so we should talk about it. The cases appear to say that these words, and there's a lot of different cities and counties that have this criterion, this language. So, it's typically interpreted to mean necessary for the preservation of property right of the applicant substantially the same as owners of other property in the same zone or vicinity possessed usually authorizes approval of a variance only when necessary to establish a use allowed by the applicable zoning district. So, it's not so much, this is what I want to do, the particular desires of the applicant, rather, is it necessary to establish a use allowed in the zoning district? You have commercial land, can you do commercial development on your land? You have residential land, can you do a residence on your land? So, deprivation of a property right possessed by others is not necessarily a direct comparison of the size of their homes or the shape of their homes, but more the use. So, they have residential use, you have residential use. And there's a case involving a McDonald's wanting a commercial development and saying, "Well, this means we get a commercial development," and we, that's fine, but they also wanted a sign that was taller than anybody else's sign, because they really wanted to get, to track people from the highway. And it was like, no, you're not entitled to anything special, just the use that's allowed in the zoning district. in the zoning district. So what's necessary to establish the use? And then the next one is not materially detrimental to the title, Title 17, and then to property in the zone. And this is where you have some testimony and comments from neighbors about, this will be detrimental to my property, and then it goes to height. Yes, we do not have regulations about view, but we do have a standard which asks you to look at whether or not it's detrimental to the other properties in the zone. So to the extent people are concerned about view, that's the only reason why you should concern yourself with it, that criterion. And then the minimum necessary to alleviate the hardship. And this is, the cases here would talk about, to satisfy this criterion, the city must consider whether there are alternatives that would eliminate the need for the variance. This is probably where your comment about, what about a one-story house? A one-story house would need a five-foot setback. A five-foot setback would only be, four-foot is what they're requesting, four-foot would only be one-foot variance from what the required setback is. So would the minimum necessary to alleviate the hardship be build a one-story home with just a small variance, a one-foot variance, from what the standard is for a one-story home? So those are things for you to consider. Remember, again, that they must demonstrate that they meet all the criterion. Oh, I really had to cover. I, again, you make the decision. Yes, I think.
All right. Thank you. Now it's time for deliberations.
So that's where I would say what I would think would be better, to relieve the hardship, correct?
What? I didn't hear.
This is where we would talk about how to alleviate the hardship.
Correct. So your feelings about alleviating the hardship would be?
To allow a one-story house that would still have the same square footage as the proposed two-story house, and only violating the five-foot setback by one foot.
Don't we have to close the record, and, or are we allowed to be-
I'm sorry, did we not do that?
No, we did not yet.
Yeah, you need to close the hearing.
All right.
Close the record.
Entertain a motion to close the public hearing and the record.
I move to close the public hearing and the record. A second.
Have a motion and a second. All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing none? Okay.
I just have one other item, is that, you know, the request is the request that has been made. So you're ruling on the application before you, you're not changing the application that's before you to something else. So they've made an application for a variance based on their proposal, they believe they've demonstrated that they've met the criterion, they have the burden to demonstrate they meet the criterion. So your task as a quasi-judicial decision-maker is to look at the criterion, and look at the application, the facts in the record, and determine whether or not they meet each and every applicable criterion. While you could look at it and say there are alternatives that may meet the criterion, it's not your job to redesign the project.
But with con- I'm sorry.
Go ahead.
Okay, this is a question to the attorney. So, but it says with either meets the criteria, or meets the criteria with conditions?
Yes.
And to what extent can we, can they add conditions that would allow them to say, yes, it meets the criteria if?
I think a good example would be the criterion that talks about the detrimental to the neighboring property owners. You could add a condition that would require some adjustment or reduction in height, or something, to address that. I, you can correct me if I'm wrong, but I don't think redesigning this project would be appropriate. If you, if you want to, add a condition that's a same, same size, single-story, I guess you could do that.
Can I just address that? I would be concerned, like, if you're talking about the 1,500 square feet, which would be 60% lot coverage, that's a different variance than what was asked for, and I don't think you can go there.
Okay.
Because the public hasn't had a chance to weigh in on that.
And so probably the more limited approach to, here's a specific issue we're trying to address with a condition, as opposed to redoing this project.
Okay.
Okay.
I noticed in their verbiage, they contend that they have a two-bedroom, the right for a two-bedroom house, whatever, whatever, whatever. Is it currently a two-bedroom house as it exists? Can we ask that question?
I believe it's in the record as a single, one-bedroom.
One-bedroom.
So, I mean, loss of property rights doesn't really come in if you don't have something and you're saying that you do have the right to have that, does it, or doesn't?
And that goes to my point earlier, is that generally, it's the use that's the issue, not the extent of the use. They're defining it as the property right, as right to a two-bedroom. What I'm saying is generally, it's looked at as the use, residential use of your property, not a particular level of use. Not the sign that's higher than everybody else's sign, because that's what you desire. And the case law would look at that as, I believe, and again, that's my advice, is that they might look at that as simply the personal desires of the applicant, to have a certain size of house, or a certain number of bedrooms, as opposed to the right to the use, the residential use of that property.
Yes, Steve?
Yeah, I think we're sort of caught between a rock and a hard place, is that we have to make sure that all four circumstances are met, and I think the last one, number four, we can't approve anything more than a minimum variance, and variance request for a two-story home is not the minimum. Unfortunately, I couldn't vote to approve this.
I'm inclined to agree. I mean, keeping down to a four-foot, but single, without saying a square footage, I mean, I would be okay with something like that. Without stipulating size is four-foot variance with a single home only, not a two-story.
We would, do we accept or decline the request?
Well, we can make a condition on it, like I was just mentioning.
Oh, okay.
Or we can deny it altogether, or approve what was presented.
But their request is for a two-story home, and can, I guess my question is, can we put a condition on that request that would meet the minimum variance? And I don't see how we can do that.
No, not on two-story.
So that's, you have to decline it altogether?
Correct.
Or you can give a variance with a condition of single, or single-story only. Is that redesigning? Well, it's redesigning only if you stipulate a square footage.
Well, we can't authorize something that doesn't comply with the code, and we also can't approve something that we haven't advertised. So where we've advertised a two-story, and where you might impose a condition to lower the height of the two-story in order to not adversely affect-
Right.
-neighboring properties, it's, that has some parameters, and people that got the notice would have expected a certain degree of, you know, conditions on that request. But I don't know, it's-
You can move it from two stories to one story and not be building a brand-new thing.
So I do believe in, all four criterias have not been met, so if anybody does not have any more comments, I'd entertain a motion.
Motion that we reject this proposal as it's been written for variances.
Second?
I have a motion and a second. Rule call?
But before you do that, you need, we need to have the, what specific criterion's not met, and why? That, I would say because number four is not met in a minimal way, because to have the existence of a house, a residence, doesn't require the existence of two stories, and thereby doesn't require the requirement of the setback from the sides to be made like that. They bought a property that is, in fact, on a 25-foot lot, it is being used as a residence now. To redefine the idea of a residence, to say it has to be a two-story in order to get the square footage that they desire to have, and thereby have to have the variance, I don't think it's met. So your motion is to deny the variance? Based on the fact that it's not the minimal requirement needed to still have a residence on this piece of property. It's not the minimum variance needed to alleviate the hardship, because it's asking for a two-story house, and a one-story house would be? Still a house. Would still be a house, okay. And it is bought on this property, it is existing on this property as it stands, so I guess I don't see how you're staying that the minimum is met, the minimum requirements for the variance is met, by having to go to two-story. The only reason I was, I was making that, wanting that clarification, is so that if the motion's adopted, then we, then if the applicants want to appeal it, they know what they're appealing. Right.
Well, let's just be clear, is that this is the tentative oral decision, we have to bring back findings for your adoption. Okay? So that's the process, you make a tentative oral decision, we bring back written findings of fact for you to adopt as your decision.
I'm fine with that.
So your motion?
My motion is you bring back written final decision based on that criteria as not being met, and I'm okay. Is that a proposal, or is it missing the mark?
I think we're missing the mark on that.
Yeah, I think that's clear enough.
I think your initial motion was correct, it just needed the addition that bring back findings that reflect that.
Bring back, that reflect that decision.
And we had a second?
We did.
Rule call, please.
Cunningham. Hoagland.
Aye.
Hinton.
Aye.
Griffiths.
Aye.
Long.
Yes.
Shinkarries.
All righty. Planning staff will bring back written findings for approval and signature at the next regular meeting. The final written decision of Planning Commission may be appealed to the city council. The notice of decision will be mailed to all persons who testified or submitted comments, and the appeal deadline will be included in the notice. Old business, Planning Commission rules and procedures.
Let me take a quick break.
Can we take, we're going to take five. All agree? Five minutes.[1414.81]
Calling the meeting back to order. All righty, Planning Commission rules and procedures.
I can sit down there if that's helpful.
Please.
All right.
My neck won't hurt that way.
Okay. All right, I don't have a PowerPoint for rules and procedures. We're just going to go through the tracking. We started talking about changing the rules and procedures because there were a couple problems we were having. And then when we got into it, I also made some edits just to try to make it read a little smoother for the average person. So I think we'll just kind of go through, and if you have any questions or anything that caught your attention you want to discuss, let me know. Otherwise, we'll just go to some of those things that are substantive changes.
If we can, just article by article to get consensus of approval for each article.
Okay, Article One.
Well...
No, I'll let you...
Can you just everybody look at it?
Okay.
All right, because I think we've all read a lot of this, but the major changes we can actually go through, but the small ones in each article, we'll just get a consensus of good and move forward.
All right.
That's all right.
Okay, that's fine. Do you want to start?
Sure. Article One. Everybody fine for any changes in that? All right. Article Two. Section One. Is everybody fine with the changes? All right. Then down to Section Three. I know Bruce had issues on one of the sections. I can't remember which one that was.
Oh, I did write a memo, and I did list, let's see, do I have, I don't have that memo in my hand. I'll have to grab it. But the memo, the cover memo that I put did list everybody's comments who let me know ahead of time.
All right.
Are we okay with the way she's rewritten it?
Yeah, are you happy with it? I mean, you might not be happy with it, but are you okay with it? All right. And we are on Article Two, Section Four. Section Five, Article Two.
Sorry about that little note to myself at the end of the paragraph. You can cross that off. Ask RE PAC for the TGM gap. Just cross that off. It doesn't belong there.
All righty. Article Three, Section Two.
I just had a question, but I assume the assumption that if the chair is replaced midway through the year and we elect a new chair, that the new chair for six months until the next January, correct?
Yes.
Yes, the beginning of each year that we...
Yes.
Fine with me, yeah.
All right. Everybody good with that? Article Four, Section One. Fine with that. Article Four, Section Four. Article Five, Section Two. If you do see anything that wasn't changed or that you thought should have been, please speak up. Think everybody had a chance to go all over these at home and mark them up? Okay. There we are, Article Five, Section Two. All right, Article Five, Section Three.
This is one that Steve had commented on, and he wanted to make sure this just wasn't a way to sort of avoid making tough decisions. But as I explained in the memorandum, the authority to rezone or to make comp plan amendments is with the City Council, so it has to go to them ultimately.
I guess my question was, do we want, do we want anything to go to the council that we should be providing our opinion on before it goes to the council?
Well, it does, these things do have to go to the Planning Commission to give you an opportunity for recommendation. But if you fail to do that for some reason, then, you know, ultimately, the council has to make a decision.
I'm fine, I'm fine with the language.
And typically, you know, we do have a clock on a lot of these things, so we can't just wait indefinitely for, you know, the Planning Commission to make a decision.
The idea was to not allow the Planning Commission essentially veto these kind of measures.
Yes, I suppose that could be a tactic.
I couldn't hear you, I'm sorry.
Essentially, it's, and I've seen it attempt to be used, that Planning Commission sometimes don't like a proposal, and so they're just not going to forward a recommendation and figure, well, we don't forward a recommendation, this won't go anywhere. Well, the legislative body is not the Planning Commission, and so at some point, you have to forward it on. I did have a comment on Section Five. I thought that I had asked to add the word generally, because it should say something like, we would generally, Robert's Rules of Order shall generally apply to the procedures of all commission proceedings. And that was because, actually, I may have added another sentence that said something like, failure to strictly follow Robert's Rules of Order shall not invalidate any commission action. I didn't want some technicality to undo your, something you did. And I thought I had given you that language, and maybe I had it written it down, and maybe it didn't make it in the...
I didn't leave anything out, but do we need to add something in? Do you want to add that in?
I would like to see that added in.
Maybe just say you would generally follow Robert's rules, and that failure to strictly follow Robert's rules shall not invalidate any action of the Planning Commission.
Yeah.
And that's under Section?
Five.
Five. Oh, Article Five.
Article Five, Section Five.
So Section Four. Commission shall vote on all motions by roll call vote. That meaning motion to accept the minutes, we're going to do a roll call?
Unanimous.
Okay. Article Six, Section One. I'm good.
One note under Article Six, Section Two. B is that the relative, the definition, the relative is also found in C1A below, but it's a shorter list than D. So I didn't know which one you wanted there.
Okay, relative...
C, you're saying in C, there's a different provision. C is a different statute which is particular to Planning Commissioners. And so the earlier one, B, is about the general requirement.
If this is accurate, I'm fine. I just saw two.
Essentially, here, I kind of scrapped what was in there, and I just went to the current version of the statutes, and I inserted the language. I'll look, and you're telling me that I have an inconsistent relative definition in 135? Oh, you're saying that under 1A, the member, spouse, brother, sister, child, parent, father-in-law, mother-in-law, or member? That's not consistent with the definition of relative?
Yes.
Okay, but that doesn't use the word relative, so it's a different statute with a different prohibition.
Okay. Thanks.
Otherwise, everybody good?
That whole section?
The whole section.
What?
I'm going on the basis that everybody's already gone through this at home.
My notes. Okay, I have just another, it's just formatting. Under C1, just add another line space between A and B to be consistent.
Oh, okay.
And then I had a question under G about asking for a definition for site visits. I have a lot of history with site visits, and I'm not sure we're talking about the same thing, and I don't see a definition.
Well, essentially, ex parte communications are, you know, information you receive outside of the hearing. Site visits are essentially information you receive outside the hearing, it's just not technically communication. Someone's not talking at you, emailing you, sending you smoke signals, whatever. So there's, it's handled the same way under the case law. You have to disclose the substance of what you observed when you went to the site, and that's the site that is before you and the matter, in, subject to a quasi judicial hearing. So, you know...
So would you consider it, I buy, because a site visit to me is very specific. It's going someplace, it's getting out of your car, it's looking around, it's perhaps talking with somebody.
It's not really considered like a general familiarity with the area is not really what, I mean, you basically, we all know the city, we've all been around the city, but if you went to the site, got out of your car, started walking around with, you know, permission, you didn't trespass, okay? Then I think you'd need to disclose it. But if, I mean, if you drove by and you saw, you know, or heard of endangered species on the property, you probably might want to report that just because of that fact that you observed. But generally, the windshield surveys don't usually make it.
That's for the part of ex parte communications when you're asked, and you just bring that up, that I stopped by the site and looked. You know, that way it's on the record.
Would it help to say visits to the site instead of site visits, or doesn't that really get it here?
Well, actually, site visits to me is kind of a technical term, and the way that it's been described by the city attorney fits into that. Driving by is not a site visit, in my opinion, so...
Okay, so we're good with site visits?
Yes.
All right.
See if I have any more.
And we don't encourage those, by the way.
Doesn't sound like it.
No, not so. Okay.
Or using Google Earth.
Bad either.
You know, and the thing is, we don't want you to be in the dark about these things. So if you, if you feel the need to see what's on the site, or, you know, you want more photographs, or you want to see an aerial, you know, image, just call the staff and say, you know, could we have something? And then staff will get what you need and send, make sure everyone gets it. So it's all there in your packet.
Is there something else? Had some more notes?
Not for that section, thank you.
Okay. Everybody's good up to Section Seven? All right, starting Section Seven, Article Seven, Section One.
Good.
Good with that? All right. How about Section Four? How about Section Forty-Five?
Oh, there is a line drawn through four. You just can't see it on the tracking. Yeah.
All right. Article, or Article Eight.
Are you asking for the whole article?
I was just looking to, Section Two. Everybody good? Don't all speak at once now.
Fine.
Section Three.
I have a comment.
Go ahead.
The first and second sentence seem to contradict each other, unless I've read it wrong. If they are correct and I misread them, then there's a formatting correction, which is to remove the line break.
Yeah, I think, yeah, that's just the tracking that has done that to us. It's not intentional.
I refuse to use the, I sent a separate memo because I could not stand the fact it kept breaking it in different places. The first sentence basically says, we don't issue interpretations or opinions in a vacuum. When you do interpret an ordinance, you do so in the context of a land use application. So, you know, if you have a criterion in, like a variance criterion, and in the context of an application, that's where you have the authority to say, you know, impact on surrounding property owners means property owners within this distance, and then you start to refine what the criterion means as part of those quasi judicial decisions, more specifically in the findings of fact, conclusions of law and order that you adopt, approving or denying. So they're not inconsistent, because one is just in a vacuum, and one is in a particular application that's before you.
Well, should we say that? Should we say, when the commission is required to make an interpretation for a particular application? That is before...
Well, it refers to included in the final order approving or denying the decision. I mean, it's kind of implied there.
Is required, okay.
It should say approving or denying an application or appeal.
An application or, well, how about, okay. When the commission, let's see, when the commission is required in considering an application or appeal to make an interpretation of any ordinance, either text or map, such interpretation shall be reduced to writing and included in the final order. Is that okay? Is that all right? Does that help?
Yeah, that'll work.
Thank you.
Okay.
Isn't that everything good?
Aye.
Okay. We have four. Section Five. All right. Everybody good?
Aye.
Section Six.
Aye.
Well, I just had one comment about that, but I don't want to upset any schedule, but I was just concerned about when new commissioners are appointed, such as Riley and myself, and we weren't appointed until March, and yet that workshop had happened in January, and it's no fault of anyone's, it's just how long it took for the interviews and that process of appointment to happen. So I don't know if that's, I just was trying to keep up with everything.
We say at the beginning of each year, and you're interpreting that to be January, and we don't always hold to... No.
I'm fine.
So we could say early in the year instead of the beginning of the year, but, you know.
It's okay.
It's okay? All right.
Thank you.
Just put during each, each calendar year or some, sometime.
Just say, yes. Each year, we could just say each year.
There you go.
Would that be all right? Would just say we'll hold an annual workshop each year to discuss and determine the goals.
That'll work.
Okay.
Section seven.
I'm, I'm okay.
You're okay? All right. Article nine. Everybody okay with that? All right.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Now, you probably need to vote to approve these, adopt these changes to your rules and procedures?
If somebody would like to entertain a motion for that? Somebody make?
I saw move.
Second? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Teleopposed?
Okay, thank you very much.
All righty. New business. Discussion.
Now, three of you have already heard most of this, but for the benefit of the two new commissioners, I wanted to review the TGM project that we're just about ready to start. And the reason that I have it on the agenda tonight is I want some guidance in terms of the project advisory committee for this.
Excuse me, Deb.
What?
What's the TGM?
The TGM is the Transportation Growth Management. It's a program at the state, and it's sort of between the Department of Land Conservation and Development and ODOT, Department of Transportation. And it is a funding source. I applied for money to do a plan, a neighborhood plan, for the areas surrounding our highway improvement in the Nell Scott area, thinking that once that highway improvement is finished, that area may become more attractive for development, and since it has a lot of vacant and underutilized land, that we want to be prepared with the plan so that we get the best type of neighborhood development we can, rather than reacting to individual proposals without a plan to guide us. So I just reviewed for the commissioners in February this, and, but I want the two new members to also know what's going on, so I'll be really quick about it. But this is the area of the gap, where we're having the highway project that will add a third lane, and also will have a traffic controlled intersection at Thirty Second Street, which will be huge. So, as I said, I think this is going to make it more attractive for development on those underutilized properties, or vacant properties. Number of properties in this neighborhood are also for sale. So owners are looking for something to happen. This is the planning area, and it is a large area, it's over 200 acres. The white part here is actually outside the city limits, but it's within the urban growth boundary. So this includes both land within the city limits and outside the city limits. This area right here is where more excavating is, if that helps locate it in your mind. Twenty-third Street is right along the top here of this white section that extends out into the county, and that is really our most industrial area of town. I've got some photos here. This is looking south at Twenty-third is just to the left, extending left of the highway here, or east. This, by contrast, is the Nell Scott Strip at the other end, and so that's very developed and cute little commercial shops. So two entirely different things going on. This gives you an aerial in addition to the lot lines, so that you can kind of see that a lot of it is still very wooded and undeveloped in terms of urban development. But here's the excavating site right south of Twenty-third, and then as we extend out to the east end of Twenty-third, you see a lot of other uses out here, and typically they are industrial type uses. For instance, there's a car impoundment lot out there, there are some car repair places, FedEx warehouse is out there. This is the road Twenty-third. To the north of Twenty-third, we have a multifamily housing development that was approved, but it hasn't been constructed or even begun. The approval is for multifamily, as I said, it's called Possible Sunset Views. And there it is. There's the site plan. Further on out, though, where I was showing you towards the east end, is where we have these industrial type uses. Right on Highway 101, we do have underutilized land. This is just one photograph of property that is basically vacant. We have, I have some for sale signs here in each one of these pictures, there's a for sale sign. The project area includes some land on each side. We got a grant of, I asked for 150, and we ended up with 164, so, and the city is contributing in-kind contribution, in other words, staff time in this case. So, but what happened is we hired a consultant through a bid process, and then the consultants worked through a breakdown of costs with the project manager from the TGM program. And, of course, they, you know, we talked about our scope of work, what we wanted to have happen, and then they put numbers to that, and they started out higher, and we finally agreed on 164,0700. So it's been through the Department of Justice, it's been through ODOT, it's been through DLCD. Everyone's had a chance. So in the winter of 2015, it's been, it's been now approved, and the intergovernmental agreement will go to the city council on Monday. And so I'll be presenting to them and asking them to agree, or to sign the agreement, and so that we can get started. So we'll have the project kickoff probably in the next month or two, I imagine. In the summer, we'll have a design week, which I think will be pretty interesting. It'll be intensive, all the consultants and their subcontractors will be there to work through with the public and the committees what it is that we want to have happen. And then next fall and winter, we'll be working on implementation measures, that would be like a regulatory, or regulating plan, zoning changes, comp plan changes, that kind of thing. And a year from now, we plan to be able to adopt this plan. So it's a pretty quick timeline as far as these kind of plans go, once we get started. Now, these are all the groups that provided letters of support when I applied for this money. And now the question is, who do we want to be on the project advisory committee? And the project advisory committee basically hears first from the consultants, you know, what they, like their memos that include, maybe it's inventory, maybe it's goals and objectives, it could be alternatives and options. And they give some feedback to the consultants, so it's kind of a sounding board before they actually go on to the planning commissioner, the council, or to the general public. So, and so they have meetings with the project advisory committee, and they talk about the information they've provided, and get the reactions from the local folks, so that they can kind of fine tune it before they take it any further. The project advisory committees also tend to provide some input as to the kinds of public events that we have, and how to make those most accessible or useful to the public. So anyway, the question is, did you notice in your rules that you can have subcommittees? I'm not sure that that's the best approach here, and it's probably up to the council if they want to make it a separate committee, but I don't know that we've ever had a subcommittee of this planning commission, so that's something that we could, we could take a look at. What I really want from you is input on the committee members. In the application, and now in the statement of work, it says we are going to have representatives from each one of these, and I've got a couple more pages after this. At least we're going to invite them to send a representative. This is what we've done for the two transportation plans, the walking and biking plan, and also the transportation system plan. Rather than choosing people to serve, or just leaving it open for anyone interested, we've targeted certain organizations because we feel that they should have an interest, and we ask for them to send us a representative who can be a liaison, can represent their interests, and hopefully will be well informed when they come to the committee meetings, so that they can speak on behalf of the organization. So the first ones are county groups, and because this is ODOT and money, you know, they want to have somebody from transit, they want to have somebody from ODOT, they want to have, and, you know, it's DLCD. So these are state agencies, county agencies, the school district, the community college, project area businesses and associations. Now, the two that come to my mind in this area are the Nell Scott Neighborhood Association and BAMA, because they don't have a separate commercial organization for Nell Scott, I think that they participate in the BAMA.
BAMA being the Bay Area Merchants Association.
Bay Area Merchants Association, that's right. So if, but this is the sort of thing where I'd like your input. Is there any other group in that area that I'm not aware of, that, that we would want to have represented? I'll keep going, we can come back. This is, this is the rest of them. Emergency services, that would be our ambulance or fire, so that, you know, they make sure that we're not planning something that they can't serve. The Confederated Tribes of the Slets, the project area residents. And I'm not sure how to get at that other than at the Neighborhood Association. The Neighborhood Association is pretty well organized, and Steve, I think you're from that neighborhood, are you a member of that organization?
I am, yeah.
And so do you think if we go to that organization, we will get fairly good representation?
Good, yes, yeah.
All right. Do you think that, and this is all of you, do you think that we should open it up in addition to the Neighborhood Association to ask if there are other project area residents?
I think a limited number, yes, I think we should have that kind of input.
And how would we best?
With the Neighborhood Associations, we can get input that same way, though.
Maybe a community member at large who's not associated with.
Okay. And do you have any ideas on how we might identify that individual, or advertise to reach those individuals who might be interested?
Probably what, paper?
I was going to say, paper, announcement of what we're planning on doing, groups that we plan on inviting, something along the line in that we could also be into a specific citizen that isn't associated with these kind of, or balance, you know, just so he knows he's representing the rest of the community outside of the.
Okay. Now, remember, we also, and all this material comes to you, and it also goes to the city council, so it would be in addition to the, you know, those, it wouldn't be the only person who is, you know, representing the broader community, but it's okay.
You are.
It's okay. Yes, absolutely, absolutely. Kate, do you think that sounds possible, in terms of notice or something? I think the NewsGuard is doing an article on this project in conjunction with the agenda items on tonight's and the Monday nights, council meeting.
I have a question out for the, for this, let's call it at-large resident property owner, I'm not quite sure if you want any more description or not, but that they come from the project area? I would, is that what you were thinking?
For this at-large person would come from the project area?
Yeah.
Wouldn't that be covered under project area residents? I would think this would be somebody outside of that area who would.
Actually, I believe we already have that there.
Oh.
Right.
To avoid redundancy.
We have project area residents.
So how many seats?
But I'm not sure how we reach them either, except that, you know. So if you have any suggestions there, I'd be, I'd be happy to hear that.
I guess.
But we will be notifying the public, I mean, this will be in the paper, as I said, and we can, if I can reach Jeremy in time, I'll suggest that he puts in a plea for interested persons to contact us and let us know if they want to serve. We have had, Kate has talked to a number of the property owners in this project area at the counter about other issues, not going out of her way to find them, but just as they happen to come in. And we've been pleased at the positive response that we've gotten from the property owners about the project. They're really interested in having a plan, because having a good plan provides some sense, some confidence in what's going to happen with the properties, and it really adds value a lot of times to an area. So, so anyway, a very positive response. One thing that we did write into the scope of work is that the consultants will meet with the property owners early in the process to see what their ideas are for their properties, and specifically with some that own, you know, large chunks of land, to try to work with them and really get a sense of what would be of interest. So, and then transportation users, that might be transit users, or, you know, bicyclists, pedestrians, as well as making sure that you're hearing from, from everyone.
How close are we to the conclusion of this construction project?
I think it's, could be finished by the end of the year, is that right?
Yeah, I think actually they're talking about they might finish it up by the end of the year.
Calendar year?
Yeah.
December?
Yes.
That's the last rumor I heard.
That would be exciting, wouldn't it? Mm-hmm.
This area sort of borders part of an open space area, and I was wondering, would it make sense to have representatives from any natural organizations, like the Lincoln City Audubon Society, or maybe members of the park board?
Good call.
Or Audubon. Okay. Yes, let's see, I was going to go back to the map, so you could see. Okay, this is the outline, I don't know how well that shows up for you, either on this screen, or for folks watching at home, but the Agnes Creek Open Space is right here, the south end of it, and actually down here is the Spyglass Open Space. And both of these, this has had a thinning project, and now it has new trails, and the thinning project is going to take place in fall here, so we'll have the same sort of thing here, improvements, new trails, so it'll probably increase usage in both cases.
I have a question about the boundary, and when you were first telling us about this area, is some of it in Lincoln City, and then some of it in the county? And is this a joint project where the, if so, that the property would stay within its jurisdiction, or would it be annexed, or what?
Because it's, okay, so the white part here is county.
Okay.
And so, but this is our urban growth boundary. So our urban growth boundary is showing where we ultimately think the city will grow. So our urban growth boundary is showing where we ultimately think the city will grow. And so it's a matter of whether the property owners here desire to be annexed and whether the city finds it advantageous to annex them, whether or not we can provide the kinds of utilities that we provide within the city and that kind of thing. The planning project will help us define that, and I think it's also, one of the goals is to, you know, provide some information about how, like a plan for extending utilities and that kind of thing, so that we have an idea of how feasible that is, both from topographic perspective and also from a financial perspective on how and when that might happen. Anything else?
No, this is, looks like it's going to be exciting.
I hope so.
See how this progresses.
I hope so.
So I have another question.
Yes.
Sorry, I knew I have all these questions. So when you were listing out all the stakeholders, and then, I don't know if it was a slide prior to that, but there was a question about whether or not there could be a planning commission subcommittee or not to work with this project.
That would be, well, yes, we're, okay, go ahead. Ask me your question. I jumped ahead a little bit.
No, no, that's fine. I'll wait until you say what was on your mind.
Well, when we did our transportation system plans, we set up a committee, and because it was a temporary committee, the city council did not require background checks and all that kind of thing, so it was a little bit easier to get it up and running. And because we were asking for representatives rather than accepting applications and then sorting through the applications and making selections, that also made it easier. And so I was just thinking about alternatives there, even though I think some, a couple of council members expressed a concern about having a committee, city committee, where we hadn't done background checks. But I'm wondering if you have any thoughts about that? And I was also looking at this planning commission subcommittee in terms of, you know, what kind of structure we would have in terms, you know, for setting that up and getting it going. So that's why I kind of threw that out there. I'm not sure, because we've never had a subcommittee of the planning commission, just how the reporting would go, but I think that, I think it would probably function about the same. The other ones have been, you know, the council has said, yes, go ahead and send out your invites and accept representatives from these groups, and they haven't really been involved other than that in terms of communication or reporting back or anything like that. It may be helpful to do that. But the council, the consultants tend to do that because they work with the committee. Then they revise their memos, then they take them to the next step. So that communication is there either way. So maybe you don't have to worry about that, I guess. You know, we'll, I'll take it to the council and ask them how they would like it structured.
I was thinking of asking another group would be maybe the high school government.
Ah, yes, good idea.
Bring them in.
That, that's a great idea, especially because the area is within walking distance of the high school and the elementary school.
Maybe they walk through it, absolutely.
And the college, yeah.
They want a Taco Bell.
They'll want a Taco... Okay. That's good information. Okay, anything else?
Is there a Presbyterian church that's north of the area?
Yes, and in fact...
Representative from...
And in fact, that property owner has been in, new pastor, not a new property owner, but the pastor is new at that church and came in to talk with us just generally about what's going on in the area, was very excited about the project. So, you know, we'll be one of those that we'll try to reach with our notice.
I'd just like to say that you have an excellent list for your stakeholder list.
Okay, good. Thank you. From the expert.
It's really nicely put together. It's very thoughtful.
Great. Thanks. And we also, I will mention again, we had wonderful letters of support that really helped us sell the project. Okay, thank you. That's all I need.
Well, thank you.
If you have any other thoughts, let me know.
All right, thank you. All right, reports and comments. Community Development Director?
The only thing I want to say is that I'm really pleased to welcome our new commissioners, Commissioner Hoagland and Commissioner Hinton. It's great to be up to strength again, and looking forward to productive times with you.
So am I.
And there's a lot of interesting things going to be happening with the project Deb was just talking about, parks master planning, they're starting to revise our overall comprehensive plans, so there's, it'll be good planning times.
Great.
That's all I have.
Thank you. City Attorney, left the building.
He's hiding back over there.
Just hiding.
Planning Commissioners, anybody have any comments? No comments from Planning Commissioners? All righty. Public comments on non-agenda items not involving a public hearing. Please limit comments to three minutes. Seeing one, no? Okay. Future agenda items and next meeting, next scheduled meeting, Tuesday, April 7th, 2015, 6:00 PM in these chambers. Looks like public hearing, public hearing for Southwest Quadrant, the VR Zone, and probably also...
Your deliberations on the...
Sanjia.
The appeal that you...
Sanjia.
Sunega, Senega, actually, Senega, on the Senega appeal.
All right. All right, and after that, that's all. Meeting adjourned.